Start now. This is the public hearing of the committee to hold regarding bills number 160170, 160171, 160172, and resolution number 160180. Mr. Stip, please read the titles of the bills and resolution.
Bill number 160170, in ordinance to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years 2017 through 2022 inclusive. Bill number 160171, in ordinance to adopt the fiscal 2017 capital budget. Bill number 160172, in ordinance adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2017. Resolution number 160180, resolution provided for the approval by the council of the city of Philadelphia of a revised five-year financial plan for the city of Philadelphia covering fiscal years 2017 through 2021 and incorporating proposed changes with respect to fiscal year 2016, which is to be submitted by the mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, the authority pursuant to the intergovernmental cooperation agreement authorized by an ordinance of this council approved by the mayor on January 3, 1992, bill number 1563-A, by and between the city and the authority.
Thank you. Today, we continue the public hearing of the committee to hold to consider the bills just read by the clerk. The constitute proposed an operating and capital spending measure for fiscal 2017, a capital program and forward-looking capital plan for fiscal 2017 through fiscal 2022. Today, we will hear testimony from the following departments, the chief administrative office, public property procurement, human resources, and fleet management. The first person to testify from the administration is?
Rebecca Reinhardt.
Morning. Please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Good morning, Council President and members of city council. I am Rebecca Reinhardt, chief administrative officer. Chief administrative officer. I am pleased to provide testimony on the office of the chief administrative officer's fiscal 17 operating budget. The CAO is a newly created cabinet-level position responsible for improving the way that the city allocates resources, acquires goods and services, and the way it hires and develops employees. The CAO's office directly supervises the operations of public property, IT, procurement, fleet management, records, OAR, the contracting unit, and the BAA. In addition, the CAA coordinates with the office of HR. The CAO has an emphasis on improving efficiency and effectiveness across the government and ensuring accountability in the performance of government departments through implementation of citywide performance management. The CAO's office is overseeing many initiatives that will modernize processes and will bring about a more efficient government. A few of these initiatives are procurement reform and modernization, implementing changes to make our capital projects get done faster and within budget. The newly created HR and talent function within the CAO's office will assist departments with recruiting, provide training for employees, and work on process improvements so that departments can hire and retain the most talented, diverse workforce. A new performance management process to replace PhillyStat focused on collaborative problem-solving and sharing best practices, and increasing open data, supporting innovation, and focusing on core IT systems. The proposed fiscal 17 general fund budget totals 4.6 million. While the budget is new for fiscal 17, the vast majority of the budget came from transfers from other departments. Funding was transferred from finance in the amount of 3.2 million and from MDO in the amount of 1 million. Total new general fund dollars proposed in the 17 budget is 432,000. The new general fund spending by class is class 100, 244,000, 180,000 in class 200, and 8,000 in class 3 and 400. This concludes my testimony. Longer testimony has been provided to you on the record. And with me are representatives from the CAO's office and the departments that report up to the CAO to answer any questions.
Thank you. Just briefly, you stated in your testimony that the new chief administrative office is a cabinet-level position?
That's right.
How was that done? Is that done by charter or by executive order?
Oh, well, there are... The mayor has a cabinet that is officially part of his cabinet. By charter, I think there are three members of the charter cabinet, but by practice, the mayor establishes a cabinet that has other people in it. So I don't know how legally that's done, but it's the practice.
Say executive order.
Okay. Executive order.
That gets you around the rules.
Okay. That's a good answer then.
We just did a charter change to create the office of planning and development, which was a charter required by charter, so we don't normally get to do that at will. Let me ask you about, can I get a... On the executive branch of government, and particularly the executive staff, does the department head have anything to do with hiring? Let me start by asking, how many exempt positions do you have in your department?
In just the CAO office?
Yeah, and if you have that information on other departments that fall under your jurisdiction?
Okay. I mean, I've...
I'll just ask you about your...
Okay. So for mine, are the direct employees... 10? Okay. We have 10 exempt employees.
I'm sorry?
10 exempt employees.
Okay. So basically, they're people that are just hired without civil service requirements or exams and things of that nature?
That's right.
All right. So you have broad latitude in terms of who you hire?
Right.
Right. And in the hiring practices, well, let me follow up on the other question. Do you have that information on the other departments that fall under your jurisdiction?
For how many exempts are in property and fleet? I think I don't have it right on hand. I'm sure that maybe the commissioners could come up and answer that, or I could get it to you.
When they testify?
Yeah. In their testimonies later today, they could answer that if that makes sense.
All right. All right. I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to get a sense of, and I understand transitions as it relates to one administration to the next. You know, one of the things that we in the government have been good about is making sure that we had diversity throughout the ranks, particularly when those opportunities present themselves, i.e. exempt positions, that you do have flexibility to hire people. And I just want to see what your perspective is on that?
Sure.
And in terms of the hiring practices, not only of your office for exempt executive staff, but in other particular offices?
I mean, obviously, I think diversity within the city is a very, very important topic and one that needs to be worked on. I think that having the most talented and diverse workforce is a goal. And to that end, you know, we've been working closely with Nolan Atkinson, the new diversity officer, as well as we just signed a contract yesterday, I believe, with Pew Charitable Trusts, and they're going to be looking at all of our hiring and promotional practices, exempt and civil service, to make recommendations for how we have a more diverse workforce in all ranks of government, including the leadership and executive level. So I think that, you know, we need to, you know, make it, put an emphasis on it and work towards it, absolutely.
So when did you come to the determination that you needed to put an emphasis on that?
When did I come to the determination? I think this is an emphasis of the...
I'm just asking. I mean, there's a change in the administration. There's a bunch of new people that get hired, and the changes in administration normally, they're holdovers like yourself.
I mean, I've always thought it's important personally, if it's a personal question.
So my question is, if it's important, which I believe you believe it is in the administration, there are opportunities to make a statement with respects to the hiring practices pretty much day one. And I'm hearing you talk about having the need to go to Pew and other entities to make determinations. I got to tell you, I have a number of people working for me. I never called Pew or any other agency, and I found talented people. And we have what I believe to be a pretty diverse workforce in city council, and I don't know why people have to figure out a way to do that.
Well, I think if we're going to go about actual, any type of code changes or civil service reg changes, we should have, you know, an...
I'm not talking about civil service. I'm talking about executive exempt staff.
I agree.
You have the flexibility of hiring whoever you want to hire.
Right. And I agree. I mean, there, I mean, if we're talking about the diversity in the CAO's office, the deputy for HR and talent is, you know, is an African-American woman. She can come up and talk to you. I have Lisa Rodriguez, who's a Hispanic woman. So there's several new hires that do represent diversity in our, in my group. And I do think that we can do better. We obviously can do better, but there is diversity.
Yeah. All right. So I have a sheet, and it may be inaccurate, that under the departments that fall under your jurisdiction, and I'm not just picking on you, you happen to be the person up here right now, because I get this information. So under the various departments, under the chief administrative office, executive staff, which is probably exempt, there's 22% minority and 78% white.
Hold on, let me just pull it up. 20... I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, 22%. Yes. Right.
So that clearly doesn't represent the demographics of the city?
Right. I mean, overall, I'm looking at staff demographics, three out of nine executive staff members are minority, and I agree with you that that doesn't...
Overall? So my numbers are incorrect?
Well, I'm trying to, matching those...
If they're, my numbers are wrong.
You know what? The 22% of the total, that's of the nine, I think you're looking on page nine, it's, that's the two men out of the nine people, because we have fewer men than women in our office. But it's still, I mean...
You want to get me a more up-to-date or more accurate list?
It's, sure. It's still at 33%. It's lower than the city, but...
Okay.
Great. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. I'll come back.
Okay, great.
Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President, and good morning.
Good morning, Councilman.
Just two or three quick questions.
Sure.
And I'm not clear yet who the right person is to ask this question, but I'll ask it to you. I've only been in this position for, I think, 105 days so far. So from a public sector, coming from the private sector, one of my concerns in the public sector is the way everyone operates independently and nothing gets tied together from a computerization standpoint, and the equipment that we're using as a city of Philadelphia that seems super antiquated to me. And it seems like in the private sector, you would never tolerate this. You would have up-to-date information, which would make your goals easier to accomplish, by the way. And my question is, is it your department's responsibility to look at software that we can use as a city that ties revenue, finance, LNI together on a handheld device where we have access to information? That's one of the... So I'm not sure who the right person is, so I'm asking you that question.
Yes. That's my short answer. I think that what you're talking about is an IT, IT software and application that ties together a few different departments, right? Finance, revenue, and LNI.
Well, really, everything. I'm trying to look for a package that ties everything.
Right. So it would fall under my office in terms of bringing that together. And IT reports to the CAO, but then it's also the coordination with other departments. And I would like to say that IT does have a project called Alpha for our website to tie together, try to tie together so that a business owner, when going to the city's website in the future, would be able to access and pay LNI permits at the same time as tax bills, et cetera, so it wouldn't be siloed by department.
And are we currently looking at what like other cities are using, whether it's Austin or New York or other markets, to see if they have software that we could adopt?
Yes. I believe that, you know, the IT department, those vendors constantly coming in to show what they have, and we do look at, you know, what other cities use. I think part of it is even a challenge for governments, for us and for governments across the country, is that we probably need to bridge the gap better between the private sector and the public sector, because I think governments overall are behind with technology, and we might need to look outside of the government, governmental sphere in order to get the best practices we need.
Well, do we have people in your department who you can assign or look at the issue of what is, I'm using Austin, Texas as an example, or what does New York use, and how could it apply to Philadelphia that in six months from now, we could say, you know what, there is a package out there. We've gone to five or six different locations. This could work for Philadelphia. This is the cost. We're not reinventing the wheel. This is the cost. This is how we implement it.
Could definitely look at it, and we could definitely work on it, yes.
Okay. And I'll come back to you with some more questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. So I'd like to congratulate you in your new position and new administration and a new day and all that.
Thank you very much.
So I had questions kind of on the same lines as Councilman Allen Don, and they're not really questions, but just because you're new and you haven't really had a chance to do things, but I am very much interested in your, how you plan on integrating the technology that I think is critical to better services and more efficiency and cost savings and, you know, making our services available more on a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week basis. And I know it's a challenge because of the money, but I'm sure you're going to put a plan together. I would also like to say that I see that the administration is much more global in its perspective, which I appreciate. And there are some cities that have top-notch technology as part of the government services and the satisfaction that they provide to their citizens. And I would say that some of them, and many of them, are not in the U.S., so if you could take a look at, you know, better systems and things like that. I have found it kind of frustrating, you know, for example, you know, bringing a company that would provide plexiglass screen doors between the riders and the subway tracks, better lighting and television monitors and all kinds of things that we wouldn't have to pay for. It was a, they captured in advertising costs, but SEPTA already signed a contract with Titan. It is no way comparable to the safety, the air quality, you know, of that type of thing. And I just, you know, would not like to see what's the, you know, what's the state-of-the-art when it's not globally state-of-the-art, best practices in the world, you know, that are tried and true and tested and everything. So we have had some issues in city council. I had explained before that, you know, I was trying to get a resume from one of my friends who's an attorney at Pepper. He's a lieutenant commander Navy SEAL, and I found eventually that my emails and his emails, our emails were blocked, but nobody told me that. And so we didn't know kind of what was going on. When I was dealing with Korea, we tried to do some research, and the entire nation of Korea was blocked from access, and we kind of reported it, but couldn't get access. And I think it's just a reflection that if we had better technology, we could get a lot more work done. Citizens could interface with us better. How would you approach that?
Okay. I think there's a few questions in there.
Yes.
And the mention of Korea being blocked, I know that our CIO Charlie Brennan came to talk to you that South Korea is definitely not blocked, but...
I'm going to say again, it was blocked, and he wasn't here at the time. It's a ridiculous thing. The entire country was blocked, the Korea Times, the newspapers. It's a democratic country in South Korea. We have Hyundai ROTM. I got a lot of smart people, and when we can't get through to Korea, we can't get through. So what I said to him is, let's not argue about what I did and my staff did, who are all intelligent, have master's degrees, graduated from Harvard and, you know, Brown and all that. We could not get through because it said you can't get through. So that's not even worth arguing about.
Okay. So with that said, the state of our technology definitely needs improvements, and that is something that we're very focused on in this administration. One of the reasons, you know, that we're putting this big focus on it is because departments need to have better IT systems in order to operate better. And Charlie Brennan, the head of IT, is putting a lot of focus and energy onto making our systems work better. So it's a big priority, and we need to be better at it. And I think that's something that, you know, we're moving towards. I mean, there's various projects that are underway in IT to modernize systems.
Have you put a working group together? Are you thinking about putting, like, you know, some of our best folks with, you know, the IT head, but also reaching out to our private and academic sectors? I mean, what, and the challenges on, you know, budget and all that, but do you have a working plan at this time?
A working plan to address IT needs?
Yes.
So there is a plan in place that, for IT to be reaching out to the departments to address need and then to prioritize need. There'll be a working group within the city established for that. We're also contemplating having an external working group to get some best-practice advice from the private sector as we go through that.
Okay, fantastic. And I would just, you know, say that I would hope that the city would take a leadership role with our authorities and even with some of our public utilities, like our taxi cabs and, you know, those type of entities. I'm always jealous when I look at Hong Kong and you take your phone out and you, you know, get a cab, a bus, a train, or whatever you need, or you purchase an item, you know, off of your smartphone. I wonder if we could look at those type of systems as well, and all the information's captured and it, you know, it's convenient that way. But if we don't push SEPTA, they have a much broader sense of what their responsibilities are, and sometimes they conflict with our interests.
Right. Absolutely. I think there's a lot of opportunity there, and we do need to take the lead.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Ms. Reinhardt, good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Councilman.
You were talking about, in response to the Council President's questions, in reference to diversity and some of your goals, both from a personal perspective and administration's perspective, in reference to making sure you have a diverse staff within the agencies under your departments, under your umbrella. And diversity in reference to recruitment is important, but also in reference to retention. Can you talk about the perspective of trying to retain diverse employees within, although your office is new for some of the departments that are under your umbrella?
Sure. I think that employee retention and employee promotion is a very important topic that we don't always do well as a city in terms of that there's room for improvement in our promotion and retention strategies. But I think that for minority employees as well, I mean, as well as the larger employee pool, we want to promote growth opportunities for them, and I think we need to, you know, probably do that more. So it is something that will emphasize and I'll emphasize within the departments that report up to me.
And also, earlier in testimony, when the mayor's office testified in reference to the rebuild concept as well as universal, well, let me focus on rebuild. My understanding that the process of bringing in contractors for the rebuild project will go through a either new entity or an entity outside of procurement?
Then this falls under the managing director, but my understanding from that testimony and from conversations with them is that it would fall outside perhaps of the public property structure, yes. It would perhaps be through paid.
So it would not go through the traditional procurement structure?
I don't know if that's, it wouldn't go through the traditional structure, but the word procurement, I'm not sure exactly how it would be configured at this point.
Gotcha. Okay.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. Thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. I want to take a step back and get your professional and or personal opinion on a couple of things. And I mean, it's clear that Mayor Kenny is leading by example and that he has taken a very actionable, tangible step in appointing Mr. Nolan Atkinson as the chief diversity and inclusion officer. And so leadership for sure makes a difference when it comes to this big elephant known as diversity and inclusion. And in a city where, again, we're 44% African-American, 13% Hispanic and Latino, 7% Asian, please tell me your philosophy. What is your view on diversity?
I think the city should represent, the city's workforce should represent the diversity of the city. I think that we have improvements that need to be made. I think we need to do better. I think that we're, we as an administration are taking steps towards that with the creation of the chief diversity officer, with the work that our office, the CAO's office, is doing with the diversity officer. And I did mention Pew. I know that Pew Charitable Trust before you walked in, that they've been brought on board to do a study over the next year on what changes we need to make, both in our practices and in regulation and perhaps even in city code, to establish modern best practices to create a more diverse workforce. So, and then we plan to implement on those. So I guess in a nutshell, I view it as very important, and I think we have work to do.
Do you think that it matters?
I think absolutely it matters.
Why does it matter?
It matters because the city represents, the workforce of the city represents the people of the city and therefore should look like and understand the community.
And so with that said, how many persons, how many professionals report to you that are civil service?
Directly report to me, it's just exempt. Like, you're talking about within all the departments?
Yes. I want to separate it out.
Okay. I could get that. I don't have that with me about...
Can someone get that now during this hearing?
I think so. Can we get that? We can try, yes.
How many exempt staff report to you?
Are you talking about in all the departments? Then let's, we'll get that as well.
All of those departments that report to you.
Okay. We'll get that for you as well.
And then of the exempt staff, I would like to see it broken down demographically, of all those departments that report to you.
Geog, broken down?
Demographically.
Okay. Yes.
In looking at this chart here, public property, procurement, fleet, OIT, and CAO, define minority as is depicted on this chart.
I'm sorry, what chart are you? Are you looking in my, in the CAO testimony?
Got it. So first of all, define minority for me in your view.
Well, I'm sure there's a, there's an official definition, but minority would be African-American, Hispanic, Asian, anything other than white, Caucasian.
Okay. And so based on the homework done by our offices, in procurement, well, in public property, there are no people of color in executive position?
I think that the public property commissioner, you might want to address that directly.
Does she report to you?
She does, yes.
Okay.
And I think that might get to some of the challenges. And I think that might get to some of the challenges with people coming from the trades backgrounds.
Forgive me, what did you say?
It might speak to some of the challenges in that industry, in public property and trades, construction, but absolutely there's work to do there.
In fleet, there are no women. Does fleet report to you?
Yes, it does.
Help me understand why we have to go to an outside, external authority. Is, will they, are they doing this free to the city?
Yes, they are, it's free.
Okay. So help me understand why we have to go to a third party to help us in government, where we have very smart people figure it out?
I think there's some steps we can take on our own. And keep in mind that, you know, the structure is new. So this structure and the departments reporting up to the CAO is only a few months, you know, in the making, right? So we're just starting to look at all this in this administration, to take next steps. But there are certain things that we can do within an administration.
Such as?
I think we can add, we can look at recruiting. I think that's an emphasis that we've started within CAO. We've established a new unit, a new function called HR and Talent, which is going to focus on recruitment and training, two areas that are sorely needed here. And Jackie Linton, who's here today, is Deputy CAO, is going to be leading that effort. And one of the, the big emphasis on that will be on recruiting. And often, we don't have good enough recruiting to recruit the candidates, minority candidates, to fill those roles. So we need to get better at that. And that's one of the ways that we're going about that right now. And I'm sure she'd be happy to come up and talk to you about some of her strategy.
Does she report to you?
She does, yes. Would you like her to come up and?
Please.
Sure.
And Ms. Reinhardt?
Yes.
Is there possible, is it possible that Mr. Atkinson can come?
Uh, sure, we'll contact him.
Since he's the person that you've indicated that you talk to?
Okay.
As it relates to that?
We're calling him now.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Jackie Linton, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Human Resources and Talent.
The bell has rung, but I will ask you to please brief us briefly, because the bell has rung, on what one, two, three priorities you have to achieve between now and June?
Sure. So one of the first things we're trying to do is to understand the current landscape.
Please speak into the mic.
Oh, sorry. One of the first things that we're trying to do is to understand the current landscape, like, what is represented in the city right now from a number of perspectives, exempt, non-exempt, civil service, department by department. So we've kind of put together a number of different looks, views of the way the city population currently looks. So once we kind of know where there are big pockets, then we want to go and find out why. One of the other things that we're doing is we're going to be doing an employee engagement survey that will include some diversity-related questions so that we can better understand what it looks and feels like for a diverse employee in the city, and what kinds of environmental things there may be that impact our ability to attract and retain diverse employees. So that's something that we're going to be doing this summer. And then finally, we want to make sure that we target those departments where there are opportunities and where there is a need. You know, some of them are because we have certain practices that we can't change in the short term, so we really want to focus our efforts on those things that we can do, you know, sooner rather than later, so that we can have as much of an impact as we can.
Are you civil service or exempt?
I'm exempt.
So before this hearing is over, I would like to have that demographic information, Ms. Reinhardt.
Yeah, it's being worked on right now.
Terrific. And I'll wait to the next round. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning.
Good morning, Councilman.
I've got to say for the record that I, I mean, I have a list of questions to ask, and I'm going to ask them, but I'm excited about the new role. And I think it's an actual positive change, and I think it's critical to the success of delivering efficiencies, if it's executed. And I think that's what we all struggle with council, is the execution of programs and systems and communications. But I'm excited about it and look forward to the execution of it.
Great.
So let me get into some of the questions that I have. Can you explain the difference, differences and responsibilities between the procurement and the contracting unit? And typically, the challenges that each office faces when trying to resolve the length of time between a contract and when the contract is awarded and the RFP process?
Sure. So the contracting unit, previously reported to finance, that unit, contracting does professional services. So by having it report to me now, both procurement, which handles the bidding processes for public works and supplies, SSNE, is reporting to me, and also the professional services contracting is reporting to me. So that's the difference in terms of what they do. In terms of the challenges they face, and can you repeat the challenges specifically? What was it related to?
Well, just the typical challenges that face the office when trying to resolve the length of time between?
The length of time, absolutely.
When the city executes the contract and when its RFP is initially issued?
So that's, that's a very good question, and it's a big issue. So it currently takes a long time. On, we have a working group right now that's been working on reducing the length of time. So under procurement, it has gone down, I believe, by about 20 or so days in the last few months. So we've been cutting, we've been working on reducing that by doing things such as having, you know, looking at the processes, and some things are as simple as, you know, a contract being mailed before by snail mail now goes by email, saving 15 days, that type of thing. So we're going through those processes to look at what could shorten the time.
Are they on the same system, those two offices?
Well, it's interesting, no, they're not. But procurement currently is paper-based.
I mean, they should.
In terms of bidding.
They're on the same system, correct?
I think a best practice, without like knowing the specifics of it, yes. I think we've had several studies come to tell us that a best practice would be to have the functions combined as well. So that's something that we're looking at, functions and the system.
Well, especially with the crossover of the data information and sharing of the information. So were you saying that the one office still operates with paper?
So procurement?
Procurement.
It's changing, but procurement currently does all of its bidding by paper. So, yes. But we're changing that. There's going to be, there's an e-procurement system.
Like, can we go all the way back to like 2000 presidential election and say hanging chads? We still have hanging chads in our city's procurement office?
We're trying to make progress. We're going forward. We're going forward. So it is paper-based, but we are moving with the e-procurement system. Over the next year, we'll be moving to an actual system where vendors will be able to submit bids online. This doesn't sound revolutionary, obviously, but right now, they're submitting either by walking into our office or by faxing it in. So if you think about the billions of dollars of business we do, this is important.
It's very important.
And it will, we'll have this system up and running, though, within six to nine months.
Six to nine months, all right.
You can hold me to that.
I'm going to mark that down.
You can do that.
Okay. What are the other functions that the staff works on and the contracts, contracts units serve, if not solely focused on contracts themselves?
Well, they're focused on both, they're focused on the contracts, but also the implementation of 17, 17-400, I don't want to be messing this up right now. 17-400? 17-1400, sorry about that, of the code. So it's about contributions and other legal requirements in terms of who's eligible for bidding, and they have to look at that as well.
Do you think it would make sense to consolidate the two offices so that it'd be easier? I mean, just as you had mentioned, you made a statement that it's easier for vendors to, you know, points of contact and, you know, for workflow instead of having them separated?
I think there's a good argument to be made, and that's something that I'm looking at right now.
On page five of your testimony, there is a breakdown of the performance measures of the contracts legislation unit.
Yes.
What specific steps are we taking to increase the competition between vendors and to move the average vendor response time, you know, from five per FRP to the goal of eight?
On the RFPs to move from?
Or the RFP, I'm, I'm.
Right, to move from five to eight. I think, and I don't know if T. David has anything to add to this. See here? Okay. I'll have T. David speak to that in terms of.
Okay.
And then there's also the issue of the, what we're doing on the procurement side, which I could address too.
Okay.
Good morning, Council President, members of city council. My name is T. David Williams. I'm the Deputy Director of Finance, and I am the Director of the Contracts Legislation Unit, which we refer to as the Professional Services Unit. I'm sorry. One of the things that we are, a couple of things that we're doing in regard to increasing or attempting to increase the number of vendors that respond to those opportunities is working, one of the things we do constantly is work with departments to make sure that the RFPs that they are putting out are clear, have defined goals, defined scope of work so that the vendors can understand it. The second thing that we do, we work with Ms. Angela Dowd-Burton, with her doing business with the city, and we present there along with procurement and other departments. And then another specific thing that we're doing, we have a system that we just installed probably within the past eight months called e-notification. And that system is triggered by some of the requirements in Chapter 17, 1400 of the code, and we take those email notifications, and we now allow vendors who are registered on e-contract Philly to sign up and to receive e-notifications. What that system does is it gives them an email every single day that tells them if an RFP has posted, gives them a description of the RFP, gives them the department, gives them the time that the RFP is opening and closing, and then allows them to click right on the link in the email and go right to the opportunity details for that RFP. And then from that point, they can begin to complete their application. When we started, we had probably about 1,000 vendors that signed up. We recently did an email blast, and that, as a result of that blast, or I should say, within a couple of days of sending that blast out, we increased to about 1,300. Since then, one of the things that we've been doing, we have sent that blast out to a couple of the various chambers, so the Hispanic Chamber, the Asian-American Chamber, the Filipino-American Chamber. We've sent that blast out to the LGBT Chamber and the African-American Chamber. And then we're working with OEO and Ms. Angela Dowd-Burton to make sure that that blast also goes out to her list of women and minority-owned businesses who are registered and certified with her.
So was there, Council President, it's just a subset to that question, all right? And then I'll turn it over for the next round. So is there like a lack of information, information flow to the prospective contract or to the prospective contractors? And how do we reach this? I mean, you just answered some of it, right? I mean, a part of it with the email. In addition to reaching out via email to the prospective chambers and their constituency, are there other ways to communicate so we can have a better information flow for the vendors and give them opportunities to bid on procurements?
Okay. So the other way we, I did mention was working with, doing business with Philadelphia with Ms. Dowd-Burton. And then Ms. Reinhardt and Commissioner Day actually had an in-person meeting with the Greater Philadelphia Chamber of Commerce, and we could surely continue those meetings with the other chambers of commerce. And one that I forgot to mention, the Greater Northeast Chamber is also one that we reached out to.
Great. Well, I appreciate that. So thank you. I mean, so you are taking steps, and you're going to refine it as we go along. And you can see the measurements, right? And I think that's what you're, that's what you're ultimately trying to accomplish, right?
Yes.
You know, more people access via communication, the correct information, the proper information.
Correct.
In more of an electronic way.
Right. And one of, the other thing that we encourage departments to do when the RFP posts on e-contract Philly is to then take that posting and email to vendors that they may know that are interested. So that's just another route to get the information out.
Well, my last suggestion is, please communicate with, you know, and you have with my office and a few other members that I know with procurement, but it's been an issue, I think, of this body, making sure that, you know, the communities and the businesses that we come across in the groups disseminate the information, you know, properly and efficiently. So if you could communicate with the Council President's office and?
Definitely.
Continue to communicate with council members here to help you, you know, reach out to vendors and opportunities.
And I think we're happy to go with you and meet your vendors, if vendors in your areas, if that's helpful.
It will be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President. In the testimony that you provided?
Yes.
You talked about Performance Philly. And I'm just wondering what you think the timeline is for the implementation of that program and when it might go live and be usable?
Great. I'll have Lisa Rodriguez, who's the Deputy in Charge of Performance Philly, to come up here.
Good morning. Lisa Rodriguez, Director of Performance Management. Can you please repeat the question?
Sure. The question is, you have a new program called Performance Philly. What do you think the timeline is for the implementation of this program? When will it go live and be usable?
So we want to do a few test sessions this summer, June and July, with some programs and departments. We're going to do a lot of preparation with them and support, not just sort of developing the data, but also the facilitation of the conversation. So by the, in the fall, meaning between September and December, we, it should be already in a cycle. You know, we hope to have additional sessions there, you know, between September and December that are, you know, already formal, not test sessions. And then we'll have actually a schedule in calendar year 2017 of the different programs and areas that we'll be focusing on.
Well, that also, as that also relates to the e-procurement system and the electronic document retention for city departments, you have an idea when that implementation will occur?
So the e-procurement, those are different areas. The e-procurement system, and that's what I had mentioned to Councilman Heenan, is about six to nine months, rough estimate. Records, we have a brand-new records commissioner, Jim Leonard. Joan Decker retired about two weeks ago. So we're just starting to look at how best to look at going to electronic record retention. I don't know if you've ever been down to the records storage facility at Drexel's campus, but it is a lot of paper, and we're trying to move away from that.
One last question for now. I'm not sure if this is in your department or not, but I feel like the city should have a how-to for all different businesses that want to open in the city. How to open a restaurant, all the steps to do it. How to open a law firm, all the steps to do it. How to, you know, how to do anything, how to be, how to open a dental office in the city, how to open a supermarket, how to open a grocery store, whatever it is. Is that in conjunction with commerce? But if we had a website where you just click on how-to and you go to that and you find out all the forms you need, all the rules you have to follow, and all the detail? Is that something that we could?
Yeah, that's a great idea. I'll look into that and talk to the Commerce Director about it.
There's somebody who used to work here before. I think her name's Ally Pearlman. You may want to contact her because I think she has a lot of that information.
Okay, great. Definitely.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Jim.
Hi, very much, hello, Ms. Reinhardt.
Oh, good morning.
I wanted to join my voice with other council members who've also raised concerns about issues of disparity, racial disparity within the, within, not only the departments that are under your control in particular, but also overall. And I'm wondering, like, if you have any type? if you have any types of measures or an approach that will help track and analyze, you know, progress in this area for the coming year?
I think, at this point, we've been collecting the data, and then the performance in terms of if we, any of our ratios have moved for minorities in executive staff or anything like that, that's something that we'll be working on. So not there yet, but definitely we'll be working on that, and be happy to talk to you more about it.
Sure. And I think, you know, the important thing is, is that the city does have a ton of data, and what we're not seeing as much of is an ability to utilize it and analyze it to the purposes for which data is collected.
Right.
And if there's a way in particular that you can be documenting trends within departments or particular areas, highlighting or flagging things for departments that are needing to see improvement, you know, I think that in this particular area, a lot of people do need some advice on how to make this happen, and to the extent that those of us on council can be supportive in that, I think that's also extremely important.
Okay, great. Thank you.
The other area, and, and, you know, again, to emphasize, I think a lot of us on council are very concerned about what we're seeing in terms of both disparity in terms of hiring, but also in terms of wages. And I do think we're gonna need some strong guidance and some strong and clear performance measures on how departments can and have to improve
Okay, that's something, we can work with you on that.
I'll follow up on my colleague's question about Performance Philly, and in particular about how you'll be working with the Office of Immigrant Affairs to ensure that the language access mandate is being met by all the different departments.
Lisa Rodriguez, I have got just a question, because we actually just, we started working with them last week. You know, they have a draft plan, language access plan, and we've already identified some draft measures for the first year, and so we're gonna help them put a document together. So we've already started collaborating with that office on sort of defining the short-term and long-term goals, and then identifying measures that are intermediate and then longer term.
I think what I'm also interested in, in not only defining goals, but how you're tracking departments to see whether and how they're actually implementing the language access mandate.
So that, we don't have the details on that yet, but that's plan of, that's the, that's part of the measurement plan. So each department's gonna be putting a plan together, and the Office of Immigrant Affairs has already developed a template, and that's gonna be a community, you know, shared with departments very soon. It hasn't, you know, been requested yet. And then the, the, the format of that, of that plan is they're gonna be pulling data from those, those plans, at least for the first year, to create kind of like a comprehensive picture. So the, the data is gonna come from departments, but the details about how we're gonna measure each department versus the larger goals, we're still working on that.
And do you have a timeline for when the departments are supposed to submit the plans to you?
So it's gonna be probably like eight weeks from the time they receive their request, something like that.
Okay, great. And, you know, would love to also continue to work with you on that.
Yes, absolutely.
One thing that became clear yesterday is not, it's not entirely clear that a lot of departments understand how to use Language Line, and I think that that's a very essential, important, and very easy start to all of this.
Yes, and one of the components of the process is, it's gonna be training that the Office of Immigrant Affairs is gonna provide to the departments, and having a language access coordinator in each department, that's gonna be like the point, like a senior-level language access coordinator. And so that person, and in CIO, that's gonna be me, and that, so that person is gonna be working very closely with the Office of Immigrant Affairs to make sure that, you know, the training is provided, scheduling, all those things.
And to the extent that, you know, your office, it seems like OIA should be involved heavily with training, goal-setting, advice, and, and all of that, but it seems like your office might, Performance Philly might be involved with monitoring, reviewing, analyzing data. And one of the things that I think is strong about Language Line is that it'll be very clear and evident about which departments actually use it-
Yes.
What languages they use it for, and which ones actually never-
Yes, because they actually already generate reports. So Language Line is a great tool because, it's a great tool to use, but also because it collects data behind it.
One other thing that our office introduced legislation earlier this year that would require reporting and tracking of our economic development subsidy programs, and in particular, to make sure that we're tracking jobs and how the subsidies actually result in jobs to residents here, and quality jobs in particular. And a key component of that bill is going to be able to ensure that there's an online interface that allows for the public to actually easily access it, access the information, and for the public to be able to view it. So one of the questions that I had was whether our office could work with Performance Philly to make sure and review the legislation that we're proposing so that it can work in the best practices of performance management, and also to ensure that, you know, again, we really do want this to be very easily accessible to the public. They should be able to input an address or the name of a company, understand how much subsidies they receive, the types of jobs that were created as a result, and a number of details about the types of jobs that came out of, of the, of the economic subsidy that-
No, that would be great. We would love to work with you. And then I guess it's the Commerce Department, the other department? Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've heard the conversation with regard to the immigrant community, and I always say this, 11 years ago, we started the Mayor's Commission of African and Caribbean Immigrant Affairs. 20 years ago, we started Echoes of Africa. We deal, we represent 35 countries from Africa and the Caribbean. We deal with everything. We had the Cameroonians in for 45 days. They just went back, I guess, Monday. And we have a lot of, we, we have people who speak the languages, people who have weekend programs. We're involved in the Mayor Soccer Program. We're there. So all you all have to do is just use us. And, and what an exchange we want is our flags on the parkway that I keep talking about, hopefully, before the Democratic National Convention. It's embarrassing when people come and don't see their flags. Many have worn off, blown off, and we only had maybe six or eight more. But, but they, and, you know, they usually change them a couple times a year, make sure they're cleaned up. But really, that should not be something that's so difficult to get done. So that's my statement on the immigrant community. And also, we're, I'll wait for you on another community meeting we're working on for the Community Center.
Oh, okay.
So I will leave that be. You know what that is. And, and the last thing I want to mention is that everybody knows about the big projects, the 3.9 billion, which is just one project I got in West and Southwest. I'm trying to keep up with the President in North Philly, but I'm just doing the best I can. And, but, but, you know, they have, I remember the years when we talked about 20-year plans, maybe 30-year, but we heard yesterday about a 60-year plan for out there. And what I'm saying is that, as we live and work hard at these projects, we have to have a system where we check what the work is. You know, we talk about it, but the city's job is not just to create programs, projects, work with the, the private community, government programs, but it is this issue of monitoring to make sure that the citizens who vote for us know that they have a chance at these programs, to work there, to, to be involved in opening offices there, to have a bite at legitimate homes, so that they don't just feel that they're being gentrified as they do. So we've gotta do it all at one time, and if we don't do it, we're not going to be successful, and our city won't survive in the way we're trying to go. We can't just deal with it from development narrowly and see all retail and commercial investments and industrial stuff, but we've gotta deal with it from the everyday John and Jane Q. public who want to be involved. So I raise that issue again. I know I've said it many times, at least colleagues, you can't say I mentioned the Water Department. I didn't yet. I didn't talk about all those people, 34 at our last count, who haven't been, you know, the number goes up, who have not been taken care of on North 52nd Street. So I just slid that in. And, but these are the issues that affect me, and that I think affect our city and all of us directly or indirectly. So we hope that you, we appreciate you. I know that you're sincere, and you're trying to help our city the best you can, and I only ask you to be involved in those five things upfront. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm done.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
Thank you. Good morning, folks.
Good morning.
One of the things I'd like to, for you to articulate for me, particularly on this Performance Philly, is how is this going to help to get us to the zero-based budgeting piece? How is this going to help generate the direction that we're moving into?
I would say that Performance Philly is an account, is a, is a program to use performance measures to assist in accountability. So right now, we're going through a process under Lisa, who spoke earlier, Lisa Rodriguez, that we're looking at all of the department's performance measures to see which ones are the, the best performance measures. In program, or Zero Program-Based Budgeting, there's many names, and basically, what it is, is it's saying what services does each department provide, and then attaching that to performance measures. What are, what service does it provide? What service does, for example, the Streets Department provide, and then what performance measures best judge the performance of that service? So it will assist and go also hand-in-hand. So it, it's, it will assist in the move towards program-based budgeting by establishing the best, most accurate outcome-based performance measures. It also, though, will be, in addition to the budgeting change, it will be a change in a, in a program to ensure accountability. So the way we see it is, departments and programs will have a meeting where performance measure, their recent performance measures are discussed, and we can work with a department to identify the problems that they are having and what they need to get better.
And then how is this going to interface with 311, which is the most frustrating part of some of this?
That's a good question, and I have a meeting coming up with the new Director of 311 to talk about that. I think, at this point, it might be a little bit premature for me to answer it, but it's something that's definitely on our radar.
Yeah, I think it's important that we put that at the front end, because ultimately, you know, we want to get to a place where we, our budgeting is based on needs, that is based on responses to the interfacing that we're doing with our customers, which are the residents.
Absolutely.
So we, we should kind of put that in the front end, because one of the things that we're really interested in seeing is, because of the frustration, is sort of like, what does it cost, you know, to do the things that people are asking for, you know? Are we budgeting for 14,000 potholes when we have 20?
Right.
And how do you get there? And then how do you incentivize departments to want to fully cooperate and be honest about what we need to do, so that it's not just a tool, it's a tool for accountability, but that there's an incentive to get people to become more efficient and effective? You know what I mean?
I do.
So I'm, I'm interested in that. So I just want to make sure that, that, that this doesn't, this doesn't act as a silo to all of the other things that, that the administration wants to do moving forward.
Right, no.
So sort of from the very beginning, that, that's kind of connected. As a, obviously for me, that's important and systematically, because on the language access piece, I really want to see departments in their budgets reflect their responsibility.
Mm-hmm.
I don't want to see language access get regulated to an isolated office.
Right.
I think departments need to be held accountable, and they need to have a plan that's reflected in their budget. Because if, if they don't feel it and measure it, then they're not gonna own it. And because, and the reason you see the disparity about the utilization, whether it's Language Line or, is because up to now, it's been an isolated source. So to me, if we're committed to following the law, which requires a plan in June, then it has to be reflected in every department. So this has to help people build that in, and what it looks. And again, not being punitive, how you incentivize people to do the right thing, to be inclusive in, in that way, you know? Because I don't want people to say, you know, now I'm responsible for something else. There has to be an incentive, a hook, to get it, notwithstanding that it's the law.
And it's also about providing the best customer service.
Right.
And to provide the best customer service as a city, we need to make things accessible in more than one language, so.
Yeah, and particularly since you, you know, you have, this new structure allows you to look at some of the key components around HR and hiring practices, because again, you know, the great thing about data is not what you say, it's what you do.
Right.
And so people say it, but if, if the numbers don't reflect that, then, you know, at some point, it's gonna catch up to you, you know? First-year budget is one thing, second year is a totally different thing.
Right.
So I'm interested in, in, in seeing kind of the, the connections to that. I have some other questions around procurement and stuff, but I just wanted to make sure, because I think this is an important tool to get us to those things, and I want to make sure we put some of these things in the front end of, of some of this stuff.
I think so. And just to add one thing, we are going to be conducting a citizen survey. So that's something that will also be used to inform where we're doing a good job as a city and where we're not.
Yeah. And I think the data, again, we have different systems. Every department is doing their data systems, you know, really figuring out early on how some of those things interface in a way that, that, that can allow us to be more proactive. It's a challenge. I mean, I see it as we work on Eclipse at LNI, and, you know, you don't want Eclipse to be an enhanced version of Hanson. You really want Eclipse to do what it has the capacity to do, that we're investing in the front end for that, that data, that data sharing that we need, as opposed to then like building out systems, you know, and then backtracking to where we want to go, which is eventually performance-based budgeting or whatever you want, the newer term is.
The newer term, right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Taunberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a, a question, and correct me if I'm wrong, as I am a freshman and may make an error, but I think we, I think I'm, I think I understand. Contracts for DHS, they would come under somehow you at some point?
Right, the contracts for DHS would go through the contracting process, so yes, go through the contracting.
Yeah, okay. And, and, and the ones I'm specifically interested in are the ones for nonprofits to manage the day-to-day care of foster children.
Okay.
And my question to you is, why do these contracts last only for one year when these types of services usually require contracts for longer periods of time?
Okay, I think-
And you can get back to me on this if you-
Yeah, and I can answer it generally, that contracts, I hear what you're saying, though, about foster, about foster care. Maybe I could get back to you on that.
I, I would like that. And, and, and let me fill you in on the, on the second part of this.
Sure.
So you're prepared for the larger scope it explains. Unfortunately, we've heard that some of these contracts take four months or so to be renewed, thus leaving these nonprofits, who many times have difficulty, I worked for a nonprofit, and, you know, making budget in four months without income can be very difficult, you know, taking four months to recover costs for that time. And basically, I'd like to know from your department, when you can answer this to the full committee, is what steps are being taken to address the length of time of these contracts? Unless I am in er and have been told wrong, but I have heard that the procurement process on renewal, on renewal, takes up to four months.
That doesn't surprise me. It's a problem.
Okay.
I would say, and this isn't just a DHS contract issue, this is a citywide contracting issue, that it takes way too long to, to establish a contract or renew a contract. So we are reviewing that right now. It is not just, it's a multi-cross-departmental issue, that it's sort of like unpeeling an onion to fix it.
Okay.
And we are doing that. So obviously, it's a big problem, and it's something that in the outreach that I've done since being here in my role, business after business has said-
You were already sleeping.
I can't do business with, the reason I don't, I don't respond, it's especially small businesses, minority women-owned local businesses.
Sure.
They say, I, I don't respond to, I can't do city business because the city doesn't pay me fast enough. And the reason the city doesn't pay fast enough is because the city doesn't contract fast enough. And that's- And that's, um, something that, i- if we're going to really increase competition and increase local business, minority women-owned businesses.
Right.
And also just be a better-run business as a ci, as a city.
Ourself, yeah, yup.
You know, we need to fix that. So that's something that we are actively working on right now.
I, I, I thank you for that answer, but I would still ask you to take a look at the DHS contracts.
Yes, we will.
Because you're talking about foster children, and, and you're talking about nonprofits that have a small scope of budget, a couple of months, uh, can hurt them greatly. And, and the second part of that is, I don't think any of those contractors want to turn these children away. I mean, these are children in need and have difficulty in, in their lives.
Absolutely.
We don't want our bureaucracy getting in their lives any worse than they already have it.
I a hundred percent agree with you.
Okay, and that is the scope of my question.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm finished, and, uh, Ms. Reinhardt, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you. I wanted to get some additional detail regarding the Pew study. When is the anticipated start date of kickoff for that effort?
Um, let me have, um, Jackie Linton, the deputy CIO, come up on that, since she'll be leading that.
Okay.
Good morning again. So, um, the Pew study, we will actually be sending Pew the data to begin their study this week. Um, the, the data will be, um, sent over a period of time, based on how easily it is, um, to be able to collect, to be collected out of the system, and they'll begin their work immediately.
Hmm.
The goal is for them to give us updates throughout the process, um, on specific areas that they discover, rather than waiting until the end of the survey, uh, the end of the study, to give us all of the information.
I see.
So we'll be getting information along the way.
Okay. And what's the end date?
So the study is expected to, um, last about a year.
So that means April one, that means May one, that means June one? What does that mean?
Of 2017?
I'm asking you.
You mean as an end date?
Yes.
Yes. So we have not established an end date because, you know, it, it's based on when the project actually starts.
Oh, okay.
So, so now that we've gotten the contract signed, and we're beginning the work, it's expected to be about a year from now.
Okay. All right, then, that's helpful. Um, by way, a point of information, um, as a follow-up to Councilman Dom's, um, brilliant suggestion, to, uh, create a self-help website for different types of businesses, just by way of information. LNI, uh, used to have a childcare, uh, unit, if you will, where that type of, um, information was available all in one place. It was like a one-stop shop for childcare providers, which was a, came out of my office with a recommendation at least, um, fifteen years ago. More recently, that childcare unit has been disbanded. But it was brilliant in that childcare providers could go one place and find out what all of the, uh, regulations and licenses, licensees, uh, were required to start up and operate a childcare business. So, uh, the idea or to, um, examine the, the, the value of that for other industries is, is brilliant, and one that, um, A, you should be aware that that type of practice existed in LNI, and B, for, if, if we're serious about wanting to grow, uh, neighborhood corridors and the like, that might be something, uh, worth examining. But it was exceedingly useful to childcare providers for the time that it was in place.
Okay, thank you.
And I share that with you by way of information. Um, 2011, 2012, I, uh, did a lot of homework on women on boards, uh, and so the interest in, in diversity and inclusion stems from a lot of study, uh, having read a lot of data and the like. And ultimately, as a result of, of that study, uh, homework, I'll call it, in 2013, we were successful in getting a women-onboards bill passed, signed by the mayor, which essentially said, if you want to do business with the city of Philadelphia, you now have to provide demographics of your board, and if your board, um, in many ways does not look like Philadelphia, then the chances of that particular effort being executed or, um, authorized by council is unlikely. And then November of 2014, that law was actually tested, because a developer wanted to build a brand-new hotel in Councilman Kenyatta Johnson's district. He showed up here with documents. Councilman Good and I looked back to the, um, exhibit section, where the question is now asked, what does your board look like? What do you think the answer was?
It was not diverse. It didn't have any women.
There were no women.
Yeah.
And there were no people of color.
Right.
So that effort went nowhere. And so, the, the reason why I share the backstory is because the research in my homework, I learned also, based on research of boards across the country. When you have diverse boards, you actually get different and oftentimes better decisions. And so, that's why it matters to us, um, that we have a city, particularly those in leadership and executive positions, that look like the city of Philadelphia. And so, with that, I, I, I need to know, of tho, of your staffers who are here, with the Kenny's appointees aside, have them stand so I can see who they are.
You want my staff to stand up?
Yes.
Okay. Stand up if you're part of the CIO.
Direct reports.
I have a lot of women.
And so, that's quite encouraging. I see no African-American men.
Oh. Right there, Chief Davis.
That's encouraging. And these are direct reports?
Yes.
Only the professionals?
Yes.
All professionals?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Know that, um, we will be looking forward to the final report from Pew, and the, and the ask or the expectation would be that members of council get a, get a copy of that report at whatever time Pew is ready to release it.
Absolutely.
Okay. I think the bell rung.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, I know we're going to hear from, uh, procurement about the e-procurement system, uh, when, when they come up, and, and, and we'll hear from public property about their new work on, with their work order system. And that's all great news, all the systems we need to modernize, uh, before, you know, they become absolutely obsolete. So I think that's, uh, important. So how are we working towards integrating the systems?
Mm-hmm. Um, integrating the system so that they talk to one another?
Correct. So, like, any piece of data that one department has about business, or a person, or a parcel, or land, or, you know, another use of, of, I mean, so it's, it's like that data sharing, uh, systems with offer, all office of property data, and, you know, and some of the other, uh, you know, information, uh, offices that we, that we have in systems that, that are shared, so we get a, a profile, uh, you know, and breaking down some of the, you know, the, the separate and solo systems.
Okay, I'll have Charlie Brennan answer that.
I'm Charlie Brennan, I'm the CIO, Councilman. Uh, in, in every system that we build now, actually, what makes them so hard now is all the interfaces that are required. So every system, uh, for which we, uh, start a project, what we look for is, uh, what feeds it and what it has to feed to. So, um, that's actually part of the RFP process, and it's written in for the vendor to have to build those interfaces. So, um, and, and you kind of hit on the one of them, is, is the financial systems tend to be the oldest ones. Probably the next round of capital funding, they'll, they'll be targeted to be replaced, because many of them are like thirty years old. A lot of the things that we're concentrating now are, a lot of the public safety systems are, um, are kind of front and center, and they all have really complicated interfaces, and really, that's what, that's what drives a lot of the cost in the project.
Okay, so, I mean, it's, so it seems to me, this is just, it seems to me, uh, that, you know, we should be moving towards a maximum of two systems, one, one based on people and one based on, um, based on land. Uh, so are we in a, in a position to orchestrate that, uh, even if the plan comes to, you know, with the cost?
Are you speaking specifically about the camera project?
Well, it, you know, it, about the data, uh, departments on, on the business end of it, the, the land end of it, the, um, just useful information that you can share, you know, with, you know, separating, you know, the land, the profile of the land and the profile of a person. This way, you know, we're maximizing, you know, only having, or working towards two systems, as opposed to.
No, I think you have a really good point, and it's actually shared more than you, than you would believe, because a lot of the information is pulled off and used in other applications. For example, our GIS work with geographic information systems and mapping uses a lot of that stuff, and we are very intimately involved in using the land and the parcel records for other uses. So, you know, even in the older systems, what we do, that don't have those interfaces, we kind of yank the information off and use it. So, and it, but in the new systems, we actually build it in, so it's already there for everybody. So your point is well-taken.
Good, and, and I hope we can work, work towards that, and maybe it'd be something in, in, in the, uh, in the capital, you know, moving forward, you know, a new creative idea from, uh, you know, moving ourselves, you know, to where we need to be.
Yes, sir.
To effectively, you know, deliver services quicker and more efficient. Uh, Rebecca, in the performance measures, in your testimony, you stated that there will be a review streamlined and a refined current performance measures and integrate them into a single reporting system. How often would you see, or would you imagine that this would be, uh, this analysis will be conducted? Is it only annual?
No, we.
Because I think, I mean, think it's a, it's a good idea, and will council, uh, get reviews, uh, you know, when, you know, on the, before the budget process?
I mean, in terms of performance measures being updated, our goal was to do it monthly.
Okay, well, that's, that's.
Right now, we do it quarterly, and we want to move to.
Can you say, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Lisa Rodriguez, Director of Performance Management. Uh, right now, we can get the measures quarterly, but we want to move to a monthly reporting system. And we will be testing some sort of internal dashboards in the summer, early fall, to see how that monthly reporting is, is going.
Oh, that's, that's great. Uh, will the centralized reporting system, uh, be developed and regular reports to council, or, or will we have access to the data, uh, to review in the, in the department progress?
So, I think after we do some tests to make sure that the, the display, the information, the data's coming, you know, is being illustrated appropriately, uh, we would be able to share sort of the reports in a, in a useful and accessible way with council.
Okay, great. And how are we going to ensure that all the offices of, uh, of, offices that come in front of city council, including the independent offices and agencies, uh, have a standardized performance measures, including their budget testament, including in their budget testimony?
I think for, um, performance measures, we are, um, going through a process with all departments to, um, make sure that their performance measures are the best ones possible. In terms of the elected officials or the, the separately electeds, um, we are happy to have them participate. Uh, I don't think we have the same, you know, force that we would have with our own departments to say, we need to do this, but, um, if they want to, we, we will absolutely reach out to them.
Great. And, and lastly, for me, uh, what is the projected cost of the, uh, proposed annual citizen survey, when it's related to the city services and customer needs?
It's, uh, about thirty thousand dollars.
And how many people are we planning to interact with?
So we want to get, um, you know, in, in, in typical surveys that are done in cities about the size of Philadelphia, having our responses between eight hundred and a thousand responses is a statistically valid sample, so that's what we're aiming for.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm going to turn the questioning over to Council President. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman. Um, real quick, I'm, I'm going to have to run over to the veterans event in a second, but, um, while I'm here, um, see Mr. Atkinson is, uh, in the room now. Had a couple of questions with respect to your early responses relating to leaning on Mr. Atkinson's expertise with respect to staffing.
Good morning, Council President. Nolan Atkinson?
I'm sorry.
I just gave my name for the record.
It's all good. Um, yeah, I had an earlier conversation with Ms. Reinhardt with respects to the exempt, um, positions in the executive staff, and we were discussing the demographics, the racial demographics as it relates, as compared to the demographics of the city, and I think there was an acknowledgement that, quote-unquote, we have to do better. Um, and your name came up in the conversation as a person that, I guess, not only this particular office, but the administration was going to lean on in terms of identifying people. Um, I asked specifically about exempt, uh, non-social service jobs, because you don't have to go through a lengthy process, essentially, you just hire somebody, right, who you believe to be qualified and meet other standards as it relates to the job. So, from your perspective, one, what has been your interaction with this department and other departments as it relates, well, I'll talk about this department as it relates to the hiring practices of this particular, um, jurisdictional, uh, template, um, chief administrator office, and then all of the subsequent offices that fall under that particular jurisdiction.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. Uh, when, uh, we came into office, I came in the office in, in January, uh, my first assignment was to, uh, take a snapshot of the existing metrics, uh, of the various departments. Uh, that actually took place on about February fourth, I believe, the figures that I got. By that time, uh, staffing had been done on a number of departments. I was not, and have not been involved in the staffing of any, uh, individual department. I always look at diversity and inclusion as a macro kind of responsibility, as opposed to a responsibility that applies to individual positions, but certainly, the measurements will, uh, will be determined at the end of a period of time. So, uh, my goal is to get the metrics, uh, for all of the departments, uh, to begin to figure out what departments we need to really work with to improve the racial and gender metrics, uh, as well as ethnic, uh, metrics, uh, and begin doing that. Uh, and as I testified earlier, uh, in this process, our goal is to give a, uh, a transparent document, uh, by the end of this calendar year, which says what our metrics look like, uh, and beginning to work with addressing areas that need change.
Okay, thank you. So it sounds like to me that you didn't really have an opportunity to interact with this particular office as it related to staffing, because that depart, particular department had been staffed up by the time you got here and got settled.
That's correct, sir.
All right. So, Ms. Reinhardt, in your earlier testimony, you indicated that you were working with Mr. Atkinson's office.
Yes.
So, does that mean in the future?
Right, we're working together, um, quite closely, actually, on.
Very closely.
Yeah. To, um, to talk about next steps and going forward, what, you know, what are the best ways, um, to increase, to increase diversity? And, you know, I know that Nolan has, um, been working on a work plan that he's going to identify several departments to focus on within the city, and then, you know, use those as examples, um, to, to put out best practices. So I think that when I was referring to working with, with the Nolan Atkinson, Chief Diversity Officer, it was about how to increase the diversity within the city and how to tackle the, the issue.
So how would you do that, once you've already staffed up? Would you?
Because staffing is a continual, I mean, staffing, people, people leave, um, people, we have to establish promotional opportunities, um, there's oper, people are going to be retiring, a lot of people will be retiring over the next few years. So, this is not, um, sort of a, a, something that's done at any point of time, it's something that we have to continually, continually strive towards.
So there was no thought to that when you hired the first level of staff?
Well, there was thought, and there is, there is diversity in the staff.
She's got twenty-two percent.
No, it's, well, it's... The diversity is of, of full-time staff is twenty-eight out of forty-five, executive is three of nine. I admit.
Across the board? Across all of the departments?
No, across all the departments, we now have that information if you want. Jackie can come up and give that. But I guess what I would say is that there was thought given to it, but could we do better? Of course, we could always do better.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
So, um, in response to, um, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown's question earlier, we've been feverishly trying to put together the numbers in the, in the way that she had asked for it. So I would just preface this by saying, um, this information we put together by hand in the last few minutes. Um, but in the CIO office, there's a total of forty-five employees, um, twenty- But in the CAO office, there's a total of 45 employees, 28 of them are minority, which is 62%, while 17.
Are they all of 45 exempt?
No.
All right. I'm not, I'm only asking about exempt because you have direct opportunity to hire who you want. Civil service employees, that's a process the whole night. I'm talking about exempt executive staff.
Right.
That's where you have the ability to say, I need to have diversity and I want to hire people across the, that represent the demographics of the city.
Of course.
So, that's all I really want to talk about.
Sure. So.
Councilwoman.
Precisely the essence of my request as well, to separate out civil service.
Right.
For the reasons that you just articulated.
So, what we have are the actual numbers of exempt employees, but I just wanted to preface this by saying, all of these folks weren't hired like in the last few months so that many of them were already there. So, our opportunity to really change that really rests with the number of new people that came in. So, even though we have those numbers today, I would offer up that it might be more helpful.
So, you're saying that there were no people, there were people that were in executive positions across this spectrum that did not get moved?
Yes.
You sure?
Um, from an exempt perspective, yes, I'm pretty sure of that.
There's, there's some people, but I think.
So, the answer is yes, there were people that were in executive staff that got moved.
Well, all of these, all of these exempt people are not in the executive staff.
I'm sorry. All of these exempt people are not in the executive staff. They're just exempt.
That's all I want to talk about is exec, executive staff.
Why don't we, you're, why don't we get this information exactly, exempt executive staff that has been hired, you know, since January 4th and, you know, show you the numbers that way so that we can have a more, a conversation looking at the same, the numbers the way you want to look at them? Does that sound?
No, I'm, I'm, so I said earlier, I wanted you to give me the best of your capabilities, accurate information, because I don't want to sit here and ask you questions about information that's not accurate.
Well, the, just so that, so that we're clear, the information in the testimony is, is accurate if you're looking.
I'm saying, I'm saying my information.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm, I'm, now, it did come from your information, but I'm saying maybe mine is inaccurate. Maybe we transpose numbers or something.
Well, we'll make sure to get you.
But the numbers we have are 22%.
Okay.
And that's clearly problematic, and I think we all agree.
Mm-hmm.
And my, what I'm, my point is that the best opportunity to deal with that problem is in the transition of administrations or governors or whatever, or when there's significant layoffs. Records Commissioner as an example. The Records Commissioner just left recently?
Yes, Joan, Joan Decker retired, yes.
And what process was established to?
There were.
Have an opportunity for more diversity?
Well, there were candidates interviewed and Jim, Jim Leonard was selected. You know, I mean, he is a, a white male, but we felt he was most qualified to lead that department. You know, there, that's one specific example. You know, there are other areas where we brought in executives that are minority, which I don't want to necessarily point out specific individuals and go back and forth on that, but I agree with you that it's important.
I, I'd only brought it up because you said there's opportunities when people move or resign or whatever, then you have an opportunity to increase your diversity numbers. And there was an opportunity and you did not do that. And I happen to know Jim is a great guy. I, I never worked with him outside of this office, but I'm sure he's extremely qualified. But I only reference it because you referenced it.
Okay.
In terms of being able to, you know, to change the demographics.
Okay.
All right. So, you're going to get accurate information, well, information that I will now know that's accurate since my information may not be right, although it did come from your numbers, but I'll.
We'll talk offline.
I will defer to your information.
Okay.
And, and you'll be a part of that process, sir?
I will be a pro, a part of the process of trying to get all of the department diversity statistics up.
So, you, so you're saying you're not going to address until you get every, I mean, there's, I don't know, there, this is, this is a, and I, and I, and I love the public property commissioners, great person, but, and these numbers here, six people, and it's like not a single minority. That's, you got to explain that. So, are you saying you're going to wait until you do the entire government before you address some of these issues?
I think the overall diversity plan is with the snapshot, to have conversations with the commissioners or the executives of a particular department and put out, and point out where there are significant disparities between what the workforce looks like and what Philadelphia works like and work on a plan for improvement.
Are we going to do that, it's going to take you a year to do that?
It's going to, I, I can't give a specific timetable. I know we've, we're committed to doing a document by the end of the year, but that's not something that won't, will, that, that process has started and it will continue throughout the summer with individual departments.
Okay. So, I guess I'm trying to get a sense of who, throughout that timeframe, when there's opportunities to change the demographics, who's responsible for overseeing that?
The commissioner. That would not be my responsibility.
So, it'll be the individual commissioners?
Yes.
All right. Okay. I will, wait a minute, okay, so does that mean, hold on one second, please. So, if it's the commissioner's responsibility, who will be responsible for ensuring that the commissioners?
For my departments, that would fall on me. For the managing director's departments, that would fall on the managing director.
So, it will be you and Managing Director Debrinus, the two primary entities?
Yes, and, right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez.
Thank you. I want to stand that line of, of the HR, because I agree with you, Council President, even as we do this Pew study, what is the protocol, and I'm going to, I want to talk about the civil service ones, what is the protocol as jobs get posted? And who's going to be monitoring them? And I'm going to say this, this is where I am going to say it, and I don't want to highlight the department because it's, there was an open competitive posting last week that included a requirement that it had to be 40 hours of required training by the department. So, how is that open competitive? And so, how are we going to monitor the new ones, who, like, what is going to be the protocol?
Mm-hmm.
Because there's a job description that says open competitive, but it has 40 hours of required approved training from the department.
And that, that's a civil service position?
Yes.
I mean, I think that speaks to, like, a lot of the reform that's needed in, in HR.
But what are we going to do while we're doing this Pew stuff?
Well, I would say, look, that we're trying to do through our HR and talent unit, we are trying to do as much as process for process change, for job spec changes, for training, recruitment. Some of it, you know, falls on the Office of HR, which, you know, does not directly report to me or the mayor, actually, reports to the Civil Service Commission. So, we're trying to work our way through that.
I know, but because you have so many challenges, if we don't have an interim protocol that someone's monitoring this stuff, this is the stuff that gets posted.
Right.
And then, you know, what you're saying and what you're doing are in conflict with each other. Because the exempt, you know, that's low hanging fruit. The civil service one, you know, we're approving budgets, they're going to allow departments to staff up. And, and so, we have to have an interim protocol.
I hear what you're saying.
Because if not, a job like that gets posted, and it's a very low hanging entry level position, but somebody, including the Civil Service Commission approves this requirement.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, and then, so folks call me and say, you know, why can't I get this job? I don't have 40 hours pre-approved training from the department.
Right. I think, I think that we're doing what we can do under the CAO in the meantime with recruiting and training and some process changes. You know, human resources needs to, the Office of HR, which reports to the Civil Service Commission, needs to take the lead on some of those civil service, diversity within the civil service regs and the job specs as well.
But we do have an opportunity to finance and others not to approve those positions to be slotted. I mean, there's so many different things we could be doing if people are not meeting a basic matrix.
I hear what you're saying.
I know.
I hear what you're saying and.
So, you know, and just, you know, Commissioner Ross said last week, they have not discussed bilingual selective factor or the three points that took us five years to get the last administration to agree to. We're, we're approving staff ups because we know police department has to staff up and notwithstanding the collective bargaining stuff, it's like when, there, there doesn't seem to be a standard by which all departments at minimum, until we have this plan.
Pew study, right.
That we have some sort of, you know, there's an executive order, there's all these other things around this diversity, but I just, I just feel like waiting for a Pew study, waiting for this stuff is, when we've our approving budgets that are going to allow people to staff up and openings say something different.
Right. Why don't we, I hear what you're saying and it's a very good point. Why don't we get back to you with a thoughtful response?
A protocol. We want a protocol. Because we want to be able to hold departments to the same standard.
Yes.
If everybody's doing whatever, then it's going to be really hard, you know, and then, you know, we're going to have to question you. I just think in the interim, we need a standard protocol, particularly for those entry level jobs, like no one, that's not cool. I mean, we could have that conversation when HR and civil service come up, but who approves a, a position like that?
Mm-hmm.
You know?
We can get back to you about the interim.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair, Ms. Councilwoman McGehee.
Thank you very much. Ms. Reinhardt, I actually had a question with OIT and I was wondering if Mr. Brennan was still here.
Sure.
Great. Thank you. And it, it also has to do with your department, in part because I know that OIT is such an important area for making sure that the city becomes more modernized. We have an opportunity through our OIT to attract jobs amongst a diverse community of young people who want to stay in the city, who are innovative, creative. And, you know, we would like to see our department do that. And I know that, that Mr. Brennan, you know, expressed concerns about the ability to attract that kind of dynamic in part because we're competing with the creative sector. But the two areas that I wanted to go through in terms of, you know, of performance accountability in particular, is to see if we can ask if OIT's department could submit to the council president's office a list of the capital projects that are currently online, what the deadlines are, what the, what the, what the, what the budget is for that, and as well, a list of your most recent major capital investment projects, the ones that are categorized by amount of money that was actually invested in them, and to understand what the timelines were, how, were they, did they meet, did they meet a deadline? And if we could get those to the council president's office, do you think that would be possible?
Sure, I actually have that list, so that's, that's easy for us to get.
Okay, great. And the other thing that would be helpful is if we could maybe have a briefing on council so you could kind of get us updated on that with a little bit more clarity. I'd probably prefer a briefing over a hearing on it, but, you know, if we could do that, I think that would be the first step towards better understanding the department.
I, I actually, I think that's a fantastic idea because I think there's a, kind of a misunderstanding sometimes about how the city works as far as capital projects and why, why things are focused in certain ways. And, and, and a lot of your comments are like why things don't work. You know, for example, why a lot of the financial things, why I hear Councilman Dom saying, oh, why can't I do everything on my iPhone, you know? But there's a reason for that. And I think if you understood better about the IT projects and how the money is allocated and, you know, we go through a rather extensive process to do that, I think you'd have a better understanding about, you know, why some things work better than others.
Yeah, and I think that there's been some legitimate concerns raised about major investments made in OIT that, that where the projects didn't come to fruition or they're taking much longer than they're supposed to be. And, you know, there's questions about ensuring that the direction in which OIT is going are things that truly bring us into, that, that address issues of equity, that address issues around diversity, help Philadelphians understand how this is a place that's going to serve across the board rather than maybe just being splashier projects, you know, for, for lack of a better phrasing. But why don't we start with that list? I think that would be really important to help with because I think it would help a lot of us on council better understand how OIT is thinking about tech and innovation for the future. The other, the second area where I think it would be helpful to know, and this would overlap with both OIT in particular and human resources since it was articulated at an earlier meeting, but, you know, I know that you've raised concerns about the difficulty to compete with the private sector. And in part, I'm curious about whether your department, Ms. Reinhardt, could talk with human resources and with OIT about being more creative and flexible about the kind of work that could bring people, especially those in the tech sector, into city government. One of the things that I'm pretty sure that, you know, we're not really clear about is that if, if, if tech is viewed as a standard government kind of drudgery or, you know, kind of like stuck in city hall and that we've got a creative economy and younger folks and very diverse folks who are much more mobile, who are moving around, and we're not flexible about that, particularly in a department in which it's articulated that, you know, there's, we're struggling to attract the kinds of people who are going to excite our city and bring us new projects and ideas, that is that an area where human resources could also look into? This idea of tapping more creative possibilities around work with the city?
So, there's a few questions in there. I think, first, I, I don't want to make it seem like the people, there's, we have a lot of great people working in IT, a lot of great people. I think there's.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
There's been, you know, a few, a few articles about a few people that have left and sort of triggered some questions about the city's policy to, that you can't work from home or you can't work remotely, you need to come to work with the city. And that is a rule, I mean, that the, that the city employees follow. They come here to work every day. And so, since it's a rule, it's not fair to, you know, to let some not have to come to work while others, the vast majority have to come to work. I think the conversation, though, with HR about, you know, how do we recruit the most talented workforce? I mean, that's something that, that, that my office is actually directly working on, which is recruiting. And one of the things that we'll be focused on is, you know, what, what do the millennials want to work here? You know, how do we invigorate and inspire the next generation of civic leaders? And that's probably not just by, you know, advertising a test in the, you know, newspaper and seeing who comes to take a test, you know? That's not the way our, the young generation is. So, I think we need to do exactly what you're saying and look at how do we, how, how, what are creative ways that we can attract talent?
Yeah. And, you know, for clarity, nothing that I said was meant to disparage anybody who's currently in government. It was more a reflection on the fact that that department had specifically articulated concerns about its difficulty in competing with the private sector. You know, second, I believe strongly in work rules, you know, and I, I have a high level of standard on, on government work too, and wanting it to be highly accountable. And I think that there's a way to be creative about thinking through an ability to report in, to ensure that work's being done, to hold people accountable to the projects that they start and finish, and, and still be able to think creatively. And then, the last point would be that I know that the term millennials sometimes comes with a, a whole host of, of presumptions, particularly around like class, and sometimes it can be race as well. And I want to be thoughtful that the creative economy in Philadelphia and in, in particular around what needs to be done desperately around tech and innovation is about the issue of disparity in access for low-income communities and primarily communities of color, who are often cut out of that. And I'm particularly interested in creative ways in which our very diverse communities are, are pushing through on things, and I would hate to see them kind of excluded from that conversation. So, it's just a term of where the millennial thing kind of sometimes doesn't always or necessarily capture the full range of diversity around particularly the, the tech and innovation sector. So, we've got young people in high schools, we've got high schools that are online that have creative, young people who are into graphic design, who are into computing, who are trying to put. who are trying to push hard on these issues, and I want to make sure that they're part of that conversation.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to punctuate the request made from Councilwoman Sanchez in that while we want and work and look towards doing better after the Pew report, the two address protocols, what I call in my office standard operating procedures now, would be valuable, would be valuable. So I look forward to that, going to the president as well. How soon can we expect to have the snapshot of the staff exempt demographics that the president and I requested?
Oh, we could, within, within a day or two, we can pull it together, yeah.
Very well. So I am going to have my next conversation off the record, because I should.
Okay.
Okay, I'll speak with the public property commissioner off the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. If no other members have any further questions, Rebecca, I want to thank you for spending all morning with us.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And look forward to continuing the conversations and the discussions that we've had here today.
So do I, thank you.
Thank you very much. With that being said, public property, we're going to break for lunch. No, I'm only joking. But public property, Commissioner, please approach the testimony and proceed with your testimony, please. But we will be taking, for those who, other departments that are here and those who are here to witness our public budget hearings, we will be taking a lunch immediately following the, taking a break, immediately following public property's testimony and lines of questioning. So thank you. If you want to state your name for the record and begin with your testimony. And thank you for joining.
Good, not morning, good afternoon, good afternoon, Council Majority Leader Heenan and members of City Council. My name is Bridgette Collins-Greenwald and I'm the Commissioner of Public Property. With me today is Lori Davy, our Deputy Commissioner of Administrative Services. In the interest of time, we have submitted written budget testimony before the hearing, so I will just mention a few of the accomplishments we have had this year. These were all achieved because of the dedicated staff of the Department of Public Property. I would also like to acknowledge that this year is going to see three of our very dedicated deputies leave city government after long and fruitful careers. Gary Knappich of Capital Programs, John Hurson of Real Estate, and Lem Gibson of Facilities have all contributed to countless numbers of successful projects in the city and will be sorely missed, especially by me, but by our whole staff and I'm sure by many, many of the members of council that have worked with them over the years. This will be the last budget testimony for all three. Some of the accomplishments achieved by the Department of Public Property are as followed. We continue to enhance the experience in City Hall by adding additional lighting to the portals, installing more historic photos where we see the most visitors. The latest are on the seventh floor by the tower. By designing and installing new landscaping in the aprons and courtyard, painting of the entire building, resurfacing the entire northwest portion of the apron, installing new ceilings in our magnificent hallways, and finally, our most exciting project, installing ornate gates on the building. Most of you know that there have never been any gates on City Hall's portals, so this was a great accomplishment. The gates were just selected to receive a grand jury award from the Preservation Alliance, which we are very excited to accept in May. Speaking of awards, one of our own deputies also won a very well deserved award this year. Gary Knappich will be receiving this year's American Society of Civil Engineer Philadelphia Section's prestigious award for Government Engineer of the Year. Gary's still here, I don't know. There you go, Gary. Congratulations, Gary. We're very proud of him and all his accomplishments. Oh, he's there, he didn't stand up. Stand up, Gary, he was hiding. Very, very well deserved. We made numerous space moves and renovations to space to accommodate the new administration and its staff as well as our five new members of City Council with minimal lead time and with a very expedited schedule. Our real estate and facilities teams both worked diligently to ensure work was completed timely, on budget, and with our customers' needs in mind. Working closely with the council president's office, we continue to prioritize future construction and maintenance activity in City Hall and the council areas. Look for this room to be painted over the summer recess. We continue to promote an atmosphere of performing preventive maintenance over reactive maintenance, and the numbers this year have showed that initiative is paying off. In fiscal year 16 to date, only 1% of our work orders have been for emergencies. 85% were for preventive or routine maintenance and 14% for the longer term planned construction projects. We created a fit team, a facilities improvement team, which utilizes the facilities assessment, which was done on police and fire stations back in fiscal year 15, to prioritize minor renovation jobs in addition to the routine and preventive maintenance activities the rest of the facility staff performs. This team also coordinates with the Capital Programs Division to do major renovations. To date, we have completed major renovations in Engine 70 and 71 and are currently in Engine 69. We recently completed construction renovations to the Police Academy, the 35th, the 39th, the 22nd, the 12th, and the 26th Police District, to just name a few with the addition of this new team. The outcomes have been very well received by our fellow city workers in both the police and fire departments. We were able to finally procure an asset management system which will allow the city to finally track and understand how resources are allocated for facilities, something the department has been advocating for years. In conjunction with the asset management system, we are looking to incorporate a space management component which will allow us to better understand vacancy trends and apply these newer space standards. We anticipate the asset system to be up and running in the fall. We provided support to over 260 special events last year, including the Papal Visit and most recently, the Villanova Rally and Parade. I received compliments from everyone who comes in contact with our special event staff on the dedication and professionalism they deserve, so I would like to take a moment to publicly acknowledge all of their hard work. We will continue to support the efforts to promote our city through these events in the upcoming year. This is just a glimpse into the accomplishments of the staff of DPP. As I stated earlier, I'm very proud and very fortunate to work with such a dedicated and hardworking group of individuals. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me just start off by saying I, you know, I appreciate the daunting task that you have with all our public properties and really look forward to, I think, the new approach that we're having. You know, we're taking a look at our assets, taking a look at, you know, how much they're being utilized, what kind of spatial design do we have, what are we using for storage? How are we housing our people and, you know, what kind of work are they doing? And, you know, how often they need to be in their workplace? So I know that's important to you moving forward and I think, you know, I'm sure you and Rebecca Reinhardt have been having these kind of conversations as, as we're trying, you know, just to expand on Councilwoman Gims' questions about, you know, recruiting from the private sector, more professionals, giving them a better atmosphere where they can, you know, have work, you know, shared workspaces and make it a little more, I think, just a little more sexier to come to work, all right?
We all want that.
You're right. So, so let me start my line of questionings with, I understand that there is a new work order system in place. Can you describe how that improves the city services and makes them more efficient?
Sure. So there's a work order system that's been, was put in place, implemented over the past few years, and it's been phenomenal because it replaced an old system of, we had a system apparently back in '09 that crashed and never was put back up. So that system replaced a work order system of taking orders over the phone and faxing them to the various zones to try to get the work out. So obviously, to track them electronically is a lot easier and everything's done over the system. So what that system will do will feed into the new asset management system. So all the work orders, so each asset will now have a comprehensive look at what happened to it from the work order end, from the capital end, anything that any number of departments have done. So Parks and Rec is involved in this, Health is involved in this. It will link up to the budget system, so we'll actually know how much money's been spent. So then we can make more informed decisions, just like you were just talking about, on where do we house people? How much room do we have in this facility? Is this asset worth keeping because we've thrown so much money into it? Or do we finally say this, this asset needs, we need to decommission this and go somewhere else? So this new system, which will be up in the fall, will help us make those more informed decisions.
That's, that's great. And so, I mean, I think you answered my follow-up questions. Does the systems actually integrate with other departments and city systems?
Yes, it does.
So it does. And who will have access? Each department will have access or is it going to be-
Yes.
-limited to, you know, a certain, you know, manager or supervisor to have access?
Each, each department will have access. Each department that has anything to do with asset management or maintenance or anything like that, there will be different levels. So if you have the administrative level, you'll have like the top level, so you can go in and like tinker around with the system a little bit. But most people will have that enter and, enter in data, update data, enter in work order, whatnot. So, yeah, every, we were actually working, we had a meeting Monday actually on determining what access levels.
And you will be able to track, or be able to, somebody will be able to take a look at, see who's using the facilities at any given time?
Yeah, so like a read-only type and not be able to go in and-
Correct, okay, great.
Yeah, change anything.
Now, I see that you have a plan for the facility reports for police and fire. Is there a facilities report or will there be one available through the new system of all their structural systems and needs that are in orders, like our rec centers, our libraries, and other, other properties?
So for the, I can split, yes. So the bigger answer is yes. For all the maintenance, all the maintenance work orders will feed up into this new system, so you'll know what type of maintenance work was put into them.
So that will be in fall, so police, fire, all the public properties?
Yes, so for police and fire, we have, I can't speak for Health and Library only because we don't maintain those facilities, but for police and fire, back in fiscal year 15, we underwent a facilities assessment. So it's a complete assessment of what we needed to fix at that time. So when we create our capital plan, that feeds into the capital plan, but it also feeds into that fit program I was just talking about, the facilities improvement team, where we're going to go next. So we say, okay, we did an assessment of Engine 70 and this is what it pans out. It had this, this, and this. Let's do a capital project and have our facilities group come in and do that. So, yeah, all that data will be captured in there.
Okay. If a department needs space, how is that request handled?
So there's, there's a new space request, there's a new space allocation policy. So what happens now is there's a form, we always have a form. So there's a form you fill out and it has your space needs, it has your budget, how much money you may have budgeted for things, what exactly you need. So things like how many offices you need, how many workstations you need, what the function is, whether you have the budgeted approval. And then what happens is it comes to Public Property, the real estate division, who does a preliminary assessment on, okay, is there really funding in place? Do we have anything that could fit these needs immediately? How much work is this going to take if we don't? And what Public Property then does is makes a recommendation to the chief administrative officer's office. And then they review what our recommendation is. They may have some questions, they may not. Then it could either go one or two places, come back to us to do, you know, dig deeper into the request, or it could be approved and go right to the Space Allocation Committee, which consists of the managing director, the finance director, and the chief administrative officer to make a decision. And then it will come back to Public Property and we would just start doing the work, whether that's fitting out space or designing something or whatever, whatever the next step will be.
Do you know, or do we know, what the total value of our public property that the city owns? Is there market value?
We don't know the total value. We have some properties that have an appraisal value. We have some properties that have an OPA value. We don't have a complete comprehensive list of what all our properties are worth because we would want to do an appraisal for each one. So certain ones, we absolutely know, like, you know, we could say, yeah, this one's worth this much.
So once the asset management system is up and running in the fall, would, would, is there a movement to try to, or, I mean, would somebody try to do appraisals of our-
I think eventually we would get to that point, right off the get-go when it first starts, we wouldn't because no information like that exists to feed into it. Well, whatever information we have, I shouldn't say that, will feed into it. But then as we start to get the system becoming more robust, yeah, I imagine we would-
Well, maybe we could, we should coordinate with OPA and then see when they're, you know, making their, when they're having their commercial assessments, you know, we could incorporate city property. And I guess some of these other follow-up questions to that is, you know, you may have to provide to the chair. So I'm not expecting you to know all the answers at this hearing here. Like how many square feet of public property is underutilized or doesn't have a tenant?
Or doesn't have a tenant?
Or does not have a tenant?
Yeah, okay.
All right. So, and do we have a value of the property, all right, that is underutilized? Is there an advantage to keeping some of the property strategically located throughout the city on call for use as needed? So I'll get those questions over to you-
Okay.
And you can, you can provide them to the chair.
Sure.
All right. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon now.
Good afternoon.
How, how long have you been in your current leadership position?
I've been in my position about three and a half years now.
Okay. You opened up your testimony by speaking to the accomplishments of your, of your division and I commend your team member as well. We have to salute those who do extraordinary good work.
Thank you. They're a great group.
Speak, speak if you would to a few of the challenges that, that currently exist with your department.
Sure. Obviously, a lot of our buildings are aging. They were all built, especially our police and fire stations, our police stations were all built around the same time. So they're all kind of having the same problems at the same time, just like you would, you know, in your house. So we try to stay on top of things through our preventive maintenance program and we stay on top of things through routinely going through these things. But it's challenging because they are older and some of them are just really not conducive to the way we do work right now. If you look at the police stations, you know, they have the whole things. Yeah, we have technology, everyone has 50 things they plug into, you know, from their desk. That just doesn't exist. So we, we're, we struggle with that, but I think our staff stays on top of it, but we absolutely know it's a challenge.
What is the status of the Police Administration Building? I believe it was the Police Commissioner where I posed a question and I was advised to punt the ball back to you.
So, right now, the facility out at 4601 Market is being worked on. We continue to work on the exterior package, so the whole entire facility has been got it, the inside.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's amazing if you actually get a chance to get into the, it's a phenomenal, you know, older building.
I actually worked in that building, Vicinity Hughes.
Oh, okay, yeah. So you know, yeah, when you see it empty, it's quite remarkable. So what we're, so we've got it, the building, we've remediated the building. So what we're doing now is removing the windows, replacing the windows. Yeah, we're removing the windows, doing the whole outside, the roof, the facade, and the windows. We continue to, we're continuing though to have discussions on options for, for that building as well as others.
Oh, I see. So the city has purchased it?
Yes.
But it is not yet determined if it will be used for the new headquarters for the police?
We're just, you know what, we're just looking at some options only when a new administration comes in. We just wanted to say, here's, here's what, you know, here's what you're looking at to do an analysis. So we continue to do work on the, on the property.
Let's move to the staffing part of the ledger. So according to my homework here, there are, at the executive staff level, are those all exempt employees?
The executive staff, on the, on the testimony we submit it, the five that we submit it?
Yes.
Yes.
And according to the testimony, there are no people of color?
There are not at the moment.
So what does that mean?
So the three people I mentioned that are leaving?
Yes.
Three of them are in our executive staff.
I see.
Yes. So we, we've been, we've been working, we've been working with talent, the talent in OHR to see where we can recruit with some of these issues. One, one person has an heir apparent that has been approached to see if she would be interested in filling that position.
I see.
And it would be a more, we are working towards a more diverse workplace. We knew that we had at least two of these deputies were going out because they're in the drop. The one kind of threw us for a loop, but anyway. So we are actually working, I think we're making good strides in that area. We've, working with, I met with Jackie Linton actually yesterday and we had a conversation about groups that she might know, like where can we recruit their- Historically, we've, we've put engineers in these, in some of these positions just by the nature of the work and the capital, capital and facilities. And we've, and we haven't pulled a lot from the minority field, but we've, we have been lately. So if you look at our capital, which I know this isn't the capital budget, but the stats for our capital professional staff on the capital side, we have a ratio, and these are professional higher level staff members, they're just not the senior, senior team right now, is, we're at a 42% ratio for minorities. So we are starting to see that trend change of having more people in that. So I envision when I'm back here next year, having the same conversation, the makeup of our senior team will look a lot, a lot different.
We, we would welcome that as well and your current scenario- And your current scenario is an example of what the CAO officer shared with us in that as people are transitioning, hopefully for, for greater, better things, that that's an opportunity for the leadership of departments to be serious about looking for qualified competent professionals. And you should know that there's an association called the National Association of Black Engineers with a Philadelphia chapter, where you might be able to capture the kind of talent you're looking for.
Jackie actually is a member. And Jackie was an engineer in her, in her former life. So she's, she's a member and we spoke about it yesterday.
Very good. Okay. I also noticed in your testimony that while you all are doing exceptionally well in the area of minority business contracting, unless I read this incorrectly, in the area of female women-owned businesses, did I read that incorrectly?
We have, I believe our contracting is at 68%. Let me just pull this up real quick. I believe it's at 68.5% for MBE and 27% for women.
Then I did, I did misread that.
Yeah. I'm, of course, I have this big book and of course, I'm almost positive of those numbers.
Okay. I may very well misread it. With, with all of the work going on at the
Yes, they are. I'm sorry, 27%? It's 68.5 for WBE and 28.7 for women.
Okay. I'm looking at the wrong data here. With all the work going on at the 4601 Market Street, where are you with regards to, of the work that needs to be done? How well are you doing with regards to MBE/WBE activity for that particular building?
We are, we've, we've surpassed our goals in almost every area with local, local hires, Philadelphia residents. I believe we're at 63% with actual people within the five zip codes that are there. We're at high percentage. Let me see, 63% Philadelphians, 66% minority trades workers, 5% females. We're a little behind the goal on females. Our goal was seven. 12% of those Philadelphians that were from the local zip code. So we're
That's, that's an example that it can be done if one is serious about
And, and I, I do believe Jim Lowe, who is our project director who's over here, Jim headed up the U Study Center project, which is on the same lot, as you, as you know. And he was very instrumental in keeping those numbers very high for that project. So he is experienced in that. He's mentoring Pedro over there on how to, how to, how to do the same thing. Pedro Princao. So, so our goals have, our, our numbers have exceeded the goals that we've set.
Okay. I think we will have come a long way when we can have every city department provide data in the way that you just described. Because it really matters that we have a government that looks like the city of Philadelphia. It's a broken record, but I'm gonna keep playing it.
Sure.
Thank you for your testimony.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Wanted to talk a little bit around the lease agreements before I get to, to our city assets. Is there being a review of all of our lease agreements as they come due? And are we looking at creatively co-locating some of those private lease agreements into facilities even in the neighborhoods, you know? And what role is your department playing in that?
We, I have a twofold answer to that.
Right.
Okay. So this asset management system is going to help us tremendously because it's going to track all of our assets. So you've probably heard me set up here before and say, we think it makes sense to co-locate some fire stations and police stations. And I know
But I want to look at our expensive lease agreements, like the Crazy Curtis Center and all that other stuff we did?
Yeah. So, yeah, yeah. So that's, so that's, that's the neighborhood
I mean, not mixed words here.
I kind of knew where you were going. So on the other, on the other side, our more office, our larger office-based leases. So what we, we're, we're doing are two, two actually other things as well. So we've put out, we're putting out RFPs and then we've also, we plan to put out in the next month or so, I'm hoping, an RFP to get a brokerage service, which we've never, well, we used it apparently a really long time ago. And it may not have panned out for whatever reason. But in all the brokers I've been working with, like just anecdotally, we're in meetings or you see them at different functions or whatnot, it seems like they could really help us. They know what's out there. They could figure out, okay, here's the square footage that you think you need, but how about, did you consider this, consider that? And I think that expertise is really going to help us. John Hurson's, as you know, is phenomenal and he comes up with things that sometimes I don't even know where he pulls them, pulls them from because they're so creative. But I think this broker service is really going to be able to help us too to actually come up with more creative ways of putting things and, and getting out of some of our more expensive leases. I know some leases we are in for, for various reasons. And others we are in strictly because of the location and the cost. And they're, they're the ones we have to look at.
So that we'll be tracking that as leases come up. How do we look at that? And then we had this conversation when we had the school district here. You know, one of the challenges as we try to save some of these school closures is really figuring out how you and Fran, which is
Yeah, yes.
How do we have that conversation and try to guide departments into that direction around, are there facilities that, that are available around the co-location pieces? So that we're maximizing them. You know, I think certain offices need to be downtown, certain offices don't need to be and they should be in neighborhoods as a way of us co-locating this. And so, you know, how are we driving that?
Well, you mentioned Fran and, you know, Fran and I worked together for quite a few years. We probably do talk at least once every other week about this, this issue and, and, and others that are, you know, where the city and the school district can work together. I ask, I call her all the time and say, do you have a place in, you know, wherever I want it? She doesn't have one usually, but, you know what I mean? But we do have those conversations. And I was explaining to her about this asset management system, how I think it's going to work for us. So I think when I have that data more, I can have more comprehensive conversations with her on what the school district and the city can do to either co-locate or if it's leasing from that, or even vice versa, you know what I mean? So we do, we have those conversations a lot. I think I need more, better data in either, in order to have better conversations with her, quite frankly.
As we invest in, you know, we were part of the facilities task force, we did the vacant land task force. So you and I have sat around talking about these task forces and we've done this assessment.
We're very task force oriented, we are.
And there's a lot of good information that we all learned in, in that process. I want to make sure that before we make significant investments in police and fire that we really look at that, you know? And I know Councilman Heenan emphasizes the 15th, which we share. But I want to look at districts like the 26th that are caught in the middle of, you know, an area that is up and coming and literally they're building houses up to the back of it.
Yeah.
And we're in the process of looking at substantial investments in that. Police have a hard time parking there. Like, I think that this is a great opportunity to say, where can we potentially move to 26? It's a high-value property so we can make some money off of it too. How do we locate, you know, whether it's at Penn Treaty, for instance, that has tons of space?
Sure.
Or other places? Because I hate to see us make that investment when we're putting the department in a place that they, they can't grow.
And actually, we, we are working right now, we own a facilities master plan for police and fire stations. So that's, that's, we did that assessment.
Right.
So now this is one step further. So there's money in the capital budget to do this. What we're doing is looking at exactly what you said. Why throw a lot of money into the 26th if it makes more sense to relocate the 26th? So we just had, we put an RFP out. We just had a pre-bid meeting last week. Over 50 different professional services firms came because they are anxious to work on this project. So I think by the mid, mid next week, mid next week should be, yes. We will have the official proposal, you know, the proposals in, we'll see where we go. But that's exactly what we want them to look at. And that, we don't, obviously, we don't want to make decisions. Look, if the, if the roof is leaking, we have to patch the roof, obviously, right? But we don't want to make a significant, significant investment in a property where it does make more sense to move it or it just doesn't maybe fit its outgrown, its usefulness. As I said to Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, we, we, we police a little bit differently these days. So maybe the building just will never work for us, even if it's not in, even if it's in the great location, maybe it requires a new building. So all of that information will come out of that report. That report will be to us by the end of the fiscal year, by the end of this fiscal year. So what we've also asked for is some low-hanging fruit to be given to us by October. So as, as the council president likes to tell me about the 22nd a lot, if that comes out that the low-hanging fruit is, yes, you absolutely do need a new 22nd or you need a new 2nd and 15th, we'll grab
Or can that 22nd go to Strawberry Mansion? They were trying to save the campus, you know?
And that'll all come out in the study. A lot of those details will come out in the study. So I think it's going to be, there will be a lot of collaboration too after we get that report. We won't, we wouldn't just go and
As long as we're making sure that people are not signing, renewing up leases that we really need to examine because we knew they were expensive when we went into them. And that we're trying to maximize, you know, community schools, saving school buildings, all of those, what people consider community anchors. I think that's important. I just want to make sure that you're part of those conversations so that people, you know, that you do have some sort of sway because you have looked at facilities, the publicly-owned ones and then the private, I mean, you've been in that mix. I just want to make sure new people don't come in and it's sort of like, no, I want to be over here because I want to be over here, that there's a protocol for it.
Yeah.
And that, you know, we're kind of streamlining that.
Yep.
So I just want to give you the authority to say, you need to be more involved in that so people don't go crazy.
Gotcha. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Squillen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioner. First, I want to start off by thank you, great work you did over at the Fourth North Firehouse. And I know sometimes you always complain about the timing and how long it takes and, and the work that's done, but that, that was a great job done by your office. And it really makes a difference for not only the, the firehouse, but the surrounding community.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, so, great job. The other question I have is on 990 and I know we're looking to, to move on that. What is possible from that move? And if you had additional resources, where do you think, what do you think we could do as far as personnel?
With, with the people that are in 990 or where to move them or? So what we're doing now is, so 990, and it's been an office lease that we've had for years. I mean, I used to have an office in 990 years, years ago when I was in LNI. It's been around forever and every
Back in the 60s.
Ooh, ah, I was born in the 60s, just so you know. That was so old. So, so 990 has always been that office building that we say, okay, we have this group. We're going to, we're not renewing the lease at 990. And the next thing you know, we get a one-off group and we say, throw them at 990. And we've been doing it now for about a good 15 years or so. So we're finally like, okay, the lease is up in June of 2017, so we're getting everyone out of 990. Now, who's left? We have some small little groups in there. We have some groups that are police department groups. So shouldn't they really maybe go where the rest of the police department are? We have RISE in there, so let's maybe find another place for RISE. So we have some small, we, we don't have large groups in there because we've gotten most of them out of there. We just moved gun permits out of there, moved that down to 660 Erie where it makes more sense to be like right centrally located in the city. There's parking, people can go there instead of trying to fight, fight their way through 990 and parking and whatnot. So we're, we're trying, what we're, I'm being windy, which I'm usually not on this. What we're trying to do is figure out exactly what we need in 990 and then, and then go from there. But the number, it's shrinking, the space we need is shrinking. We're hoping it shrinks to really minimal and then we can just use existing space.
So you think the move then will add less, we would need less money as far as a lease is concerned for a new property?
The 990 lease, I have to say, is very competitive. It's, it's not, it's not
But it's a big space.
It's a big space. It's not one of our higher, higher rent per square footage leases. What it is, is we do have a lot of space there and we do have a clause where we can't contract or else it re-triggers the terms to be renegotiated. So we, that's why we keep throwing people in there because we're committed to an X amount of space.
Right, right.
So do I see the space shrinking if we give somewhere, gun permits alone went into a city-owned building. So that right there is a good story. We think we're going to be able to put civil affairs in the same facility. So that will be another group that's, that's out of the 990 footprint. So by the time it's all done, we're not done with the complete requirements assessment of who needs this thing and who doesn't because some of them are programs. We're not sure what the program's going to be there by June of 17 or, or where that might move. So, yeah, I, I believe that the footprint should absolutely shrink just based on what we, the work we've done so far.
All right, great. And the last question is, I know we have put in a budget for preventive and maintenance in public property. And it was something that we were looking at as far as for other departments, parks and recs and whatnot. Do you, have you seen that additional dollars, similar to the repairs over in Fourth North, has really come in handy and do you believe that's something that should be continued?
I believe it absolutely should be continued. In the, in, in part of my testimony, I said, we, we are at a 1% level for emergency work orders now. That, that was not the case. We do preventive maintenance. As you know, we start at that program. We do them at night. We do them on the second shift. Our guys, it automatically comes out of our worker order system, like here's the PM. We hop on and change in the belts, doing things with the boilers, you know, there's, there's a litany things for HVAC, electrical, plumbing that we handle and it's, it's, it's keeping the life cycle going. We did a big program where we checked all the laterals that were going into the firehouses. One of our big issues where we would get calls in the middle of the night where, you know, stuff was backing up into the firehouses. Did the PMs on the laterals. We fixed about six or seven of them, one extensively that was, was smushed. And then the rest of them that were, were fine, we haven't had a problem. So, yes, I think it's paid off tremendously to only do 1%. With, with the aging infrastructure that we have in our buildings, I think is phenomenal.
And I think it's a model, and I want to thank you. I think it's a model that we should use all over because it really shows that with a little bit of investment, how much money we could really save on capital improvements.
Oh, yeah, I totally agree.
It's a credit to public property and so thank you for all your great work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I have two other questions and, you know, it should, unless any other members, they went to Benson's. They're over at, at the Veterans
At the Veterans thing, yeah.
The Veterans Fair across the street, which is phenomenal. So how much vacant property do you control?
We have currently about 6,400 pieces of vacant property that the city proper controls, so public property. We just transferred 10% of that over to the land bank. I am hoping that in the upcoming months and year to transfer almost all of it over to the land bank because it's surplus vacant property where they will have a budget to maintain it and whatnot and to put assemblages together.
So what's the, what's the timeline on transferring the remaining?
We, as soon as, I mean, what happens is I think we, what we have is the law department is working on the titles. PHDC gives them the list. They work on the titles. They work with council to see what should come in and out, out of the inventory. Then it comes over to me. I sign the deeds, goes over the PRA. They sign the deeds and then it, then it's conveyed over to the land bank. So it's a fairly quick process once, once it gets moving. But I think what has to happen is those conversations of what land can actually be transferred over. And there are conversations that PHDC is having with council, with individual council members. But I'll sign them as soon as I get them.
I think a lot of members
I don't want any more vacant property.
I think a lot of members will do the same. But so you're answering some of the questions, you know, the follow-up questions to that. So how is, you know, how is, is, is a piece of land determined to be a surplus and, and transferred? So who determines that? PHDC determines that?
Yeah. PHDC, well, the land bank lives in PHDC.
Right.
So that's where the land bank is. So it's
So who identifies the, the 6,400 vacant parcels or property?
PHDC, I mean, the properties that we have, the 6,400, we got through tax foreclosure over the years and years. I mean, some of the property we've had for like 40, 50 years. But PHDC
So they're looking, so PHDC or land bank is taking a look at all 64?
All of ours, all of the PRAs and all of PHDCs. Because they, we, all of them
Correct.
All of us own separate properties. So, yeah, they, they did a comprehensive look at what can go in the land bank now? What should we put in the land bank for assemblages? What should we just sell? So, yeah, they, they did that analysis. The PHDC and the, and the land bank staff, I should say. I mean, I'm sure Ann Fadolin can speak more on the process than I could, but, I mean, just from when I was working on the vacant stuff.
So if I want to, so if I want to know what determines, or what is surplus worthy of, of going to the land bank so we can, you know, start the process of the title search and, and any other kind of revenue delinquencies, I mean, that's why they're there in the first place. So PHDC or the land bank will, will have all that
Yes. And they'll be able to tell you if it's something in your district that's maybe not city-owned or privately-owned or whatever, they'll be able to tell you the process.
And when it, when it comes to you ultimately, the quicker, the timeline is just like, as soon as it gets to you, you sign off on it.
I immediately sign it.
Okay. And last, who takes, well, not last, I'm sorry. Who takes care of public art and how is it a budget?
Of public art, the budget flows through public property, but Margot Berg of Arts and Cultures is the public arts guru.
So what does that mean? So, so Mark?
Margot.
Margot.
Margot Berg.
Okay, so Margot takes care of the public art? And that's within the Department of Public Property?
It's not within the Department of Public Property. It's in the Department of Arts and Cultures.
And they have their own And they have their own-
Office.
Uh, office, but they have their own abatement team or, or team that goes out?
They, I believe what they do is contract out their monies, Class 200 monies, so I think they contract out to conserve art and whatnot.
Okay, all right, well, I'll, I'll ask Margot.
It passes, it's in our bu, the money in our budget, but we don't actually handle the-
Right, but it's in your budget, so it flows through you over to-
Yeah, on the capital side, yeah.
On the capital side for arts and, okay.
Yeah, if you were real specific, you could ask Margot Berg and that, and that group.
That's, I'll, I'll certainly ask, but I think you answered a good question. So in the five-year plan, you have a, a retro plan for, for public property in, in the future? For retrofitting, energy costs?
For retrofit, I would actually have to bring Adam up if he wanted, if we wanted to speak on, on the energy process and program because he actually takes the lead on that, so I don't want to say anything to-
You can state your name for the record and I'll ask the question over. I'm going to lead in to that question first.
It's Adam McGallic, I work in the Office of Sustainability.
Okay, great. So we, we had an ESCO over the last couple of years, very successful, right, with, with retrofitting the quad, the quad. What are, what were those utility cost savings and energy savings?
So the, the city invested in the quadplex, the four major downtown buildings. The total utility savings were about one, are projected for $1.4 million. We've so far been through the, we've only received the second quarter, through the second quarter of our measurement verification program and, and we're on track to meet our, our savings projections, so we're, we're doing that.
Is that, is that 1.4 a year?
1.4 million dollars a year. And of course, that changes a little bit as energy costs rise and fall.
Okay, so it, retrofitting in the future in the five-year plan, do you have a, a cost estimate on projections of utility and energy savings?
We don't, we don't have a projection of utility cost savings. That's one, one project within a, you know, an overall $30 million plus energy spend that the city has for, for kind of natural gas, electricity, the, the things the general fund is spending on. What we do, what we are working on is basically planning out our investment plan for city facilities in, in the general funds that we can start to build out and see how we're going to meet our, both our energy reduction goals and then the associated cost benefits that come from this.
So in, in the five-year plan, is there, there's a $30 million capital investment in, in the retrofitting? Is that, is that correct?
That I'd have to follow up with the, the budget office. And that budget's not in our, in the Office of Sustainability's budget, that's, that's something that's been talked about through the energy campaign.
We can follow off and we can, you know, I'll put it succinctly in, in a series of questions that you can provide.
But the understanding I have is that they're, we're looking at major investments in the city's capital buildings or in, through capital for energy performance contracts, modeled off of the quadplex project.
All right, all right, thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Very well, thank you. I just had a couple of questions primarily on facilities management. There's a number of properties that are in the 8th Council District that are managed by public property and wanted to get a sense of, well, in your statement over the next five years, facilities management will increase preventive maintenance on city facilities from 30% to 40% to 60% by fiscal year 21. And I was hoping to get some details on that because it's critical to some of the properties that are managed by public property in my district.
Sure. So when we started the preventive maintenance program about two years back, I believe, what we concentrated on were the properties that we maintain, so that's the police and fire facilities. So we only maintain police and fire and then a few, like kind of one-off agency facilities, so Fleet and LNI. And so what we did was we concentrated on everywhere that, that we run. So what we do is we cycle through every, when we started, we did it twice a year because we just started, right? So what we do now is we try to cycle through on different times of the year depending on the season, depending on what kind of preventive maintenance we're going to do. So like if it's before the summer, we want to make sure all the HVAC systems are working in the facilities that, you know, that we maintain. So we go through and do all that and like a work order will pop up to our guys, like it's a proactive work order instead of, you know, go fix the leak at Engine 70, it'll pop up, do the, do the PMs for, for these in your area. So how we have, and then for the heating season, you know, it's, it's the opposite. We do the boilers and whatnot. We're always changing belts. We have, I have a whole list of everything that we do and it's real technical, but our guys make sure that they go through and do that, you know, at each facility. So it just prevents us from having to go out and do that reactive maintenance and the emergency maintenance.
Okay.
Like I said, so we have it on a good schedule. We believe we can increase it somewhat. We were really, we actually, it took us a little bit of time to define what a PM actually was. Some things we, we were putting in as routine or whatnot, or, or it's an emergency and it's like, no, if we just did this on a regular cycle, it, it would be, so I, I think we're in a really good place now where our numbers will definitely pick up because we know this is a PM versus this is an emergency, this is reactive and this is just a construction project that we're working on. Not just, but this is a construction project we're working on to get things done. So our guys are, they are assigned by zones, so we have Ridge and Cinnamonson is one of our zones that's up there, so we have, you know what I mean, they're all assigned, so it's very easy for them to deploy to each site that we have, like within their area. So, you know, we have one in northwest, northeast, south, central, so that's the way that pans it out. So it's been successful to date, so I imagine it will just continue to get more successful because it takes off the backend for us rather than do it upfront, plan it than, than not.
Okay, all right. And there's a couple of properties that, in specific, that I was thinking of, but you're saying that, or, or maybe, let me put it this way, is there, can you tell me which districts or which properties in the 8th District that you're responsible for outside of police and fire stations?
Uh, yeah. Give me one second. I don't think there's going to be much though outside of police and fire.
No, I don't think it's a lot. I don't think it's a lot.
Yeah. Let me get my list up. I believe I have this by district. Oh. Okay. Okay. 8th District. Zone 5, the one I just mentioned, is in the 8th District. Everything else, these all look like they're police and fire. Police and fire, ladder, engine. Yeah. Yeah, everything else is police and fire that I have on this list here. Do you have something specific that-
Well, what about, I know the property located at, can't think of the exact address, but at the intersection of Coulter and about Pulaski or Morris, which is the West Hickam Boys and Girls Club, which is a city-owned and maintained.
It's, okay, so that's, we don't really maintain that, but we did do-
Not, not really.
No, well, we don't at all. We, we're not responsible for maintaining that, but we did the capital work and sent our staff in a few years back-
Right.
-because of the, the conditions of the city-owned building, but it's really not something that's in our maintenance inventory.
Okay.
But we did, we did that assessment and we conducted the work and we put the capital and we worked with you guys to put the, your staff to put the capital money into it.
That's what I was asking, yeah.
Yeah, it's not really in our purview though, it doesn't really come in under our inventory.
Okay, because that's something that you just did for the capital work that needed to be done.
Yes.
In that particular instance.
Yes.
Okay, all right, great. All right, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Tauntonberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And then we're going to break for lunch.
Thank you. I, I, so I will be brief because I don't like to get in the way of people's foods. Ms. Greenwall, I, I want to thank you as, as a tenant here, you're sort of my landlord, but I want to say that your department is very, very, very good at keeping this building clean, particularly one that is so historic and, and in many ways so important to the city of Philadelphia. City of Hall is recognized by, by millions, not just in the city, but throughout the United States. And there were even comments made years ago that if City Hall were promoted properly, it will be a greater destination because the, the city halls, for example, in Munich and, and other cities of, of Europe, the city halls are, are pointed destination. Munich, for example, has a great Glockenspiel, so every hour there's a, almost a, a really, really a, a show. And being here and, and giving you those commendations, I also like to know if you have any particular plans for City Hall itself, for example, in the courtyard or in the portals?
We do, actually. We just, I should have probably maybe said this in the beginning, we, we just worked with the planning and planning commission and the order department and just received a placemakers grant, so a $200,000 grant to actually do some study, to actually put something concrete in the courtyard. If you've noticed over, over the past year, we actually put money aside to do the plannings in the courtyard and on the apron. It used to be real bare and there wasn't a lot in there, so now it's very festive. We have a landscape architect on staff, Debbie Cahill, who put a tremendous amount of effort and actually was in there digging herself and putting on the plants and so we're beautifying it that way. We're working with this group, we have this $200,000 grant. We're told that it could leverage up to another $800,000, which is what past recipients have gotten, so the verdict's a lot on that, but that's what we've been told, so I can see us putting some, something that'll make you attracted to the courtyard, but still keeping within its like more passive, reflective way in the courtyard itself.
Sure.
In the portals, we just did the gates, we just put the gates up, which, like I said, we won an award for, which is awesome. The portals, we just put some lighting in.
Who did you win the award from?
The Preservation Alliance.
Excellent.
Excellent, yeah, yeah. We go next week, the beginning of May.
I think they're a great addition. They, they look like they always were there and it's fantastic.
Yeah, and, and believe it or not, there have never been gates on City Hall. So they are, the gates were designed and installed and fabricated and installed based on one little small drawing that MacArthur did, the architect. It was like this big and we blew it up and, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Point of information, if I may, Commissioner, Councilman, could you explain that they're the original schematics, right?
Yeah.
And, and design of, of, of the gates, right?
He, he drew, MacArthur, the, the architect drew one small picture, it was this big, that we had, that we saw, and we blew it up, we gave it to, you know, an architect or firm, architectural firm, and they, they created scale plans and we, and we fabricated the gates and got them up. And, yeah, they've been a wonderful addition and people are, people stop me all the time to say, oh my God, the gates, you know, they look fabulous. So we envision bringing more visitors into City Hall. So, I mean, we do work with the tourist, you know, group and gratis group and whatnot, and we've done painting around here and we put historical images up on the seventh floor. We've discussed having tours that are maybe more of an off-the-beaten path, like a behind-the-scenes at City Hall tour.
That would be great.
Yeah, I figure you would like that. Last year, we held a ghost hunting event and we actually, yeah, we were in the paper. Joe Broski, our building manager, was in the, was in the, building supervisor, was in the paper, he slept overnight with a bunch of ghost hunters in the Daily News. It was pretty cool. But people, people are really, you know, so people like to know what's going on in City Hall, like what can they see, what's down there?
Sure.
So, so it's something we're looking into. I do have to work, be mindful and work with risk management on anything I'm going to do with that and not just bring people in the City Hall without them, but we think it's, it's some cool stuff that we can do in here.
Thank you.
Absolutely, I'm in agreement.
Many, many Americans are familiar with the term Rotskeller. Well, they really don't know where it comes from, it's a German phrase, but what it really is, in Germany, in Munich, in Cologne, in every big German city or even small German cities, the city hall is called a Rottshaus. And a Rotskeller actually comes from the term that in each city hall, there is a restaurant, generally, bigger ones anyway, particularly in Munich and in Frankfurt, and that's where the term Rotskeller comes. That actually means the cellar of the city hall. And would you ever see or any possibility at some point of having a German Rotskeller actually in City Hall? I mean, an actual restaurant?
Restaurant? It's, it's been brought up numerous times. With city, with space, it's such a premium on the first floor-
Sure.
-right now. We have, obviously, they're mostly offices on the first floor and they're public-facing offices a lot on some of them, so it's been brought up several times. There have been studies done. I was just actually told that the former controller, Jonathan Zidell, did a study back 20 years ago on this very concept, so I'm going to try to dig that out and see what it looked like and go from there. Yeah, I, I wouldn't be opposed, but I, I don't, I don't get to totally make the call on that.
I understand.
But I think it would be pretty neat.
Well, I would help with that. I think City Commissioner Schmidt, who is also familiar with the term Rotskeller, might be willing to move his office, so we got the beginning of a, I can't speak for him, but I think he certainly would have an understanding for Rotskeller.
We have to be competitive with what kind of business we let in, but, yeah.
I, I think it's kind of a fun thing and that's why I brought it up, but it could also be very attractive to tourism, which once again, this is probably the most ornate city hall in all of America and impossibly, I'd go head-to-head and say it, it matches any city hall in Europe.
Oh, thank you. I agree, I love the building.
Or anywhere in the world, not just Europe.
I think the building's phenomenal as well, I'm, I'm great.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. That will be it for, any, any questions, Councilwoman? Commissioner, thank you. Thank you for all the good work you've done over the years and look forward to continuing the progress that we've made in public property.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. This committee of the whole will stand to on recess until 2 o'clock, and I want to thank publicly the court sonographer for the extended time.
Good afternoon. We're going to reconvene. Thank you. Next up, we will have the procurement department.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Council President Clark and members of City Council. I am Trevor Day, Commissioner of the Procurement Department. I'm here to present for your consideration the Procurement Department's fiscal year 2017 budget request. With me today is Deputy Commissioner Nicholas Suzie and Director of Public Works and Special Services, Jessica DeJesus. The department is requesting a total appropriation for all funds of $4,951,818, of which $4,869,720 is in the general fund. The proposed FY '17 general fund allocation represents an increase of $32,048 over the FY '16 estimated obligations, which is a result of scheduled raises as agreed to in the last contract agreement for District Council 47. $2,194,662, which amounts to 45% of the total general fund budget request, represents citywide charter-mandated advertising expenses. As many of you are aware, the procurement department is only involved with facilitating involved with facilitating less than half of the city's total contract awards. Somewhere between 50% to 60% are professional services contracts, managed and released by each operating department. The Procurement Department continues to strategically improve the way it conducts business and streamline its operations relative to concessions, public works, commodities, and maintenance slash repair contracts. We continue to achieve a high level of awards to local businesses, with 68% of procurement's total contract dollars awarded in calendar year 2015 to registered local businesses, an increase of 15% over calendar year 2014. The Procurement Department continues to foster contracting opportunities for OEO-certified vendors. Our department has engaged various stakeholders, including vendors, professional organizations, and fellow city agencies in an effort to improve our initiatives to encourage increased participation. Since January of 2016, we have conducted and participated in eight vendor outreach initiatives that have attracted several hundred businesses on how to do business with the city. On the city's public works contracts, minority and women-owned business participation was 25% in fiscal year 2015, while services, supplies, and equipment was 28%. Fiscal year 2016, our participation has increased to 44% and 36% respectively. The department, in coordination with the Chief Administrator's Office, has created three working groups, two for public works and one for commodities slash services. These groups will create and implement actionable items to improve our contracting efforts. The creation of a procurement manual and a contract plan will create more transparency and guidance on how and what the city intends to contract. The implementation of a front-end e-procurement system will lower the barriers many businesses face in responding to procurement bids. Reverse auctions will ensure that the city is fiscally responsible with the funds entrusted to us by the citizens of Philadelphia. Improvements such as these will enable procurement to implement best practices, where businesses can more readily respond to opportunities put out by the city of Philadelphia. With regard to the Procurement Department staff, we still maintain a few retirement-eligible employees. The department, as a whole, however, has successfully hired and trained 75% of its entire staff over the last five years as a result of retirement employee turnover. As noted in our written testimony, the Procurement Department boasts a diverse staff, with 59% being Black slash African-American, 39% Caucasian, and 2% Hispanic. Overall, 68% are women and 32% are men. In fiscal year 15, the Service Supplies and Equipment Division issued 139 bids, resulting in 169 contract awards totaling over $45 million. Also in fiscal year 15, 925 small order purchases under $32,000 were processed totaling over $6.3 million. Currently, there are 45 active cooperative contracts with estimated contract value of approximately $60 million and estimated cost savings of over $3 million annually. The Public Works Division awarded 131 contracts worth $290 million. Public Works also solicited three concession opportunities that resulted in one contract. Additionally, in FY15, the special services unit collected almost $505,000 in revenue from sale or scrap of obsolete, unserviceable property. Mr. President, this concludes my testimony. Should any council member wish to engage in further discussion in any of these matters, my staff and I are happy to answer any questions you may have or meet with the council members at your convenience.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. I want to ask you a question. In the part of your testimony, when it references economic policy or the value in the sustainable procurement policies and procedures, do you believe your department could serve a purpose of enhancing economic development or policy or growth in the city of Philadelphia?
Could we enhance economic development policy?
Yeah.
I think by the nature of issuing contracts and awarding contracts locally, we are advocate, or we are engaging in economic development policies.
When you make those determinations, to what degree, because you know, we're Philadelphians, right? So, we really don't like people other than Philadelphians. But I know there's certain laws governing our procurement practices. From your perspective, how far do you think you can go, excuse me, in our Philly First provisions? You know, we have a bill teed up. We didn't have the public hearing yet. This is another iteration of the earlier Philly First bill we did some years ago. I think it started with Councilman Green, then Councilman Good did some amendments. How far you think we can go before we get challenged by the law?
I mean, I think you're asking...
Let me ask you a legal question.
Right, a good question. I mean, I don't know the answers to those questions, how far we can go. You know, I would say that, you know, we currently award 68% of our total contract awards last year to local businesses. You know, we do, we do a good job in employing and awarding contracts to local businesses.
All right. You know, Philadelphians, we want it all. With respects to, and you reference your, I think we're going kind of fast. With respects to the demographics associated with the contracts awarded, you were throwing out numbers. Could you not necessarily talk about percentages? Could you talk about the dollar figure for the various categories? Because sometimes, like, I just got some information this morning. It talked about a number of awards under a certain, like, $100,000. It was a significant number, higher than the other ones. But sometimes, the amount, the number of people, awards doesn't necessarily reflect the aggregate amount of the awards.
Sure. Yep. That's, that's, yeah, the LBE stuff. Yeah, I mean, not LBE, but MBE. That's MBE. Yeah, yeah. So, for, we can talk about, you know, a couple of different, you know, we have two different areas, public works and service supplies and equipment. So, for public works, I mean, do you want the dollar value or do you want the percentage of contracts? You're looking at dollar value.
I'm looking at dollar, because sometimes numbers, percentages, don't necessarily reflect the real value of the actual contract.
Sure. So, in fiscal year 15, 25% of the dollar value was awarded to minority or women-owned businesses. And fiscal year 15, that, I mean, 16, that's 44% of the dollar value.
Forty-four?
Yes.
Fifteen-six, so a much better job.
Yes.
All right, okay. It's good to see we're ticking up.
Yeah.
Okay. Chair Representative recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Welcome. I want to start with page one of your testimony, initiative number three. Something made me pretty excited. I am a firm believer in having a one-stop-shop for information versus having a little bit here and a little bit there, and we expect the public to sort of comb through, you know, all of our programs and all of the opportunities, and you can go a little haywire trying to do that. And you, so you referenced distributing a procurement guide. It's an essential playbook, right, to be able to have something essential that we can give to those who are interested in doing business with the city, particularly with the guise of increasing minority women-owned businesses in the city of Philadelphia. Tell me, one, when do you think the guide is going to be ready? Have you incorporated sort of any kind of vendor feedback into the guide? How was the concept sort of developed?
Sure. Yeah, so I think you're absolutely correct in all of those facets. So, you know, the city of Philadelphia, as, you know, sort of witnessed this morning, there's a lot of discussion around contracting. And now that the contracting, all contracting reports up to Rebecca Reinhardt as the Chief Administrative Officer, I think there's, there's an effort to consolidate and explain exactly the policy right now in a manual and, you know, sort of the intentions, the improvements moving forward. So, our goal is having a, is implementing the e-procurement system within six to nine months, and once we have that system implemented, coming out with a procurement manual. We'll be creating that during that process, but probably after that e-procurement system is implemented. So, after nine months, you know, probably January to March of 2017.
Great, that's January to, okay. So, one, thank you for that information. So, we'll get the e-procurement set up first, then the actual guide. I just ask, as you sort of lay out or develop your marketing plan, that aside from the businesses that will contact procurement directly, make sure you include council members as a part of that. We have town hall meetings, you know, often. We're out in the community where people are asking us, you know, quite often, "How do I get an opportunity to do business with the city of Philadelphia?" So, use us as a part of your marketing plan.
Absolutely. We will.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Just a question for you on the reverse auction process.
Yes.
This is where, I guess, you have sellers compete against each other in bidding the price down.
Yes.
And so, when do you think that will be implemented?
So, we received three proposals in April. We're reviewing those proposals right now, and we expect to be under contract with the selected vendor in the next, you know, month or two months, however long the contract process takes. We're looking to implement it come July 1st.
So, by July 1st, we'll have this in place?
Yes, we're looking, that's our, that's our goal, and that's our plan.
And so, you'll keep us informed of the savings that might occur?
Yes. And to add, you know, we're looking at this as, not an approach on every contract. You know, we need contracts where we already have competition. It doesn't work if there's one or two vendors competing against one another. You know, we're looking for, you know, commodities that already have existing competition and rolling it out in that fashion.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Got a question, not related to your testimony or your budget. So, some representatives from the Controller's Office, I don't know if they formally presented this proposal of purchasing, that's a term. They were actually looking at the universities, if they were to purchase locally. You familiar with it all? And it was actually a significant dollar figure, and they were trying to create incentives. So, State Friends University penned it, obviously buys a whole lot of paper and all the other things, that if they were able to purchase locally, how much more revenue the city would bring in as a result of, you know, sales tax and all the other associated wages and everything. Have they ever approached you?
They have not approached me. But if you have, you know, names or contacts of people, I would be more than willing.
Maybe. The relationship with the, they came to me in a past administration, so there is unlikely that they would have approached the administration.
I do know that there is a coalition with universities looking at purchasing, and, you know, Rebecca and I have talked minimally about that, but we would definitely, you know, talk with you.
Yeah, I mean, it was, you know, you know, they were talking about certain incentives to, you know, get those people to do that. I mean, it's clearly, those universities spent a lot of money.
Yes.
And other institutions. Okay, I'm gonna make sure that they reach out to you.
Okay.
Advertisement, one of my favorite topics. So, your department, I believe, is still responsible for soliciting advertisement contracts for?
For advertising required or charter-mandated or state mandated.
No, not you guys, not us from advertising. I'm talking about, I'd say, because it was moving, it was a moving ball last administration. I was trying to figure out, because you know, we had this big proposal, municipal marketing and a whole nine yards, and they kept moving the ball on me, so I couldn't figure out where it was, who was responsible. Are you responsible for that? Because we just recently, I think we're in the process of concluding something for the MSB wraps.
Nicholas Suzy, Deputy Commissioner, Procurement. So, the last, that, there was a concession contract for municipal advertising, I think that's, but, yeah. The last that was left was with the Managing Director's Office, but of course, the Managing Director's Office has changed a bit. So, I think we need to probably regroup and find out where the initiative is in terms of operation and a final working agreement with the contractor who was awarded.
All right, so we're not...
I believe there, my recollection is that there was some sort of state, there was a change in state legislation surrounding advertising. So, I think the last that I had heard was we were waiting for that implementation of that change before the city was moving forward with the contract.
No, it's actually changed. It's been implemented. The issue is, there's possibly, and they say possibly because all those will be open for review, limitations on advertisement on the public thoroughfare, particularly state highways, and then, regardless of those limitations, the authorization process had to ultimately go through the state, and that was this change in the state regulation, PINDOT. But the first level of review, as it relates to zoning or any other regulatory matters, went through the city of Philadelphia initially, and then that applicant would have, which I think is stupid, frankly speaking. You should be wondering, I don't know what they have in another level of redundancy, but then it had to go to the state for authorization. But it was indicated that the city's review process would essentially be accepted at the state level. But we don't know where we are.
So, as Nick had indicated, I mean, this is a, it's an MDO-managed contract.
Okay.
So, procurement did put out the opportunity. We awarded the opportunity, and it's now being managed by the Managing Director's Office.
All right. You say it definitely is, or you think?
To my, to my knowledge, that is the case, yeah.
Okay. Ms., where's Anna? Is that your understanding? Okay, I just want to make sure. I know I got these hierarchies. We only have, we only have a couple of people working at City Council, so we don't have a lot of levels of government. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Day, I wanted to follow up on some questions, actually some responses from Rebecca Reinhardt earlier regarding diversity, and also getting, she provides information regarding diversity and also retention. Wanted to get your perspective in reference to diversity, not only in contracting per se, but also from a workforce perspective, especially from a retention perspective. I know that Ms. Reinhardt spoke on a personal perspective and also on behalf of administration of the goal of make sure we have a diverse workforce, but also diversity also comes from a retention perspective. So, I'm curious about what's your perspective on retention of a diverse workforce within your department?
Sure. So, I think, you know, retention of employees is always a good thing. Jessica is actually a good example of somebody who started with procurement and has succeeded and risen through the ranks and is now a Director of Public Works and Special Services. So, we definitely support retention and diversity within our workforce. You know, if you look at our testimony, we have a diverse workforce, and we have two positions available in our executive team. We made an offer, and that person accepted the offer, that is a woman, a minority woman. So, you know, as of today, you know, we have a diverse workforce.
You said two positions recently came open in your office?
Two positions recently came open in my office?
No, I mean, you said you had two openings, and I was thinking...
Two executive team openings, yes.
Right, and that happened based on people decided to go, other opportunities? How did that transition between one administration to another? When did those openings become available?
One person took another job opportunity, and so she left on her own accord, and the other person was a, was a result of the transition.
Okay. And that happened at the beginning of this administration?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to also ask some questions about contracts, and one of the questions that have come up through a number of different hearings is that for local and businesses of color not able to participate as much because of the size of the contract. I believe I've done the understanding that the administration is trying to, at least in the rebuild initiative, have smaller contracts. Is that, are you also taking the same perspective as administration to unbundle some of our larger contracts? And if so, is there a list of unbundled contracts?
So, yes, we are looking at all of, you know, as part of the working groups that I'd mentioned during the oral testimony, we are looking at the commodities that we're putting out. We're looking at what we're putting out, how we're putting it out. We're looking at the OEO registry and sort of overlaying what we're putting out for contracts, the OEO registry and participation that we can seek. We're working collaboratively with Angela Doud Burton and sort of analyzing as opposed to just not having a plan and continuing to cycle through contracts without having a plan or an approach. You know, currently, 44% of our contracts are under $100,000. So, there's a little bit of a disconnect when we say that there aren't opportunities out there for small businesses. There are opportunities out there for small businesses. I think we need to do a better job of marketing those opportunities, and we've talked about that in the past.
So, when you say you're going to do a better job of marketing, and I think we talked about this both in my office and also in the earlier budget hearings, of getting the word out, and we talked about doing some new ideas and new concepts, and some of the conversations I've heard is, you know, the workshops and other type of initiatives done in the past, but what additional steps would you plan on taking and being more proactive and getting the word out?
So, I think we have been more proactive. Over the, since January, we've engaged in eight vendor outreach initiatives, so, which is, you know, two times every month. Is that enough? No. I think we need to, you know, increase that and look at, you know, how we're strategically approaching local businesses, minority and women-owned businesses, and increasing that. I mean, part of this is also related to OEO and OEO's registry. You know, can we be more strategic about looking at our existing portfolio of contracts? Are there vendors that we have under contract that are women-owned or minority-owned contracts? Are we underreporting, underreporting the contracts that we actually have? So, these are all, you know, things that we're going to be looking at.
So, in reference to being proactive, which you said you believe you're being proactive, have you reached out to other entities, either in the private sector or other public sector entities, maybe city-related or other jurisdictions that have programs that are doing a better job of getting the information out, and trying to see what they do, and either work with them or model some of the programs that they're doing?
Yes. So, we've been in conversations with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and also SEPTA. I mean, SEPTA does a pretty good job of, you know, sort of diversity in contracting. You know, and I think in fiscal year 2016... You know, and I think in fiscal year 2016, as I said in my oral testimony, you know, we currently have, what was it, forty-four percent of our public works contracts were awarded to women or minority-owned vendors, and thirty-six percent of our service supplies and equipment vendors, year-to-date for this fiscal year.
Can you give some perspective on your involvement in the rebuild program? There's been some back and forth in reference to how that is going to go through from a procurement perspective. What is your involvement in rebuild and that initiative?
So, I'm, of course, you know, a hundred percent supportive of that initiative. You know, I think there's, the administration, the Managing Director's Office is currently looking at how they're going to be putting that out, and I think that is, you know, they have working groups, they have groups that procurement has been involved with and attended. You know, this is a decision that the administration is looking at, and, you know, I don't think that decision about how it's going to go out has been made. So, you know, we're joining in those conversations.
But isn't that traditionally an initiative, considering that is a city initiative that would go through procurement or with procurement's involvement?
A portion of that would. I mean, the design component would not go through procurement, no. It would be managed by public property, and then that would be designed, and then the construction would be put out through procurement, yes.
But considering rebuild, for the most part, is a capital investment project, we're looking at parks, recreation centers, and libraries, that would be construction, so traditionally that would go through your shop, correct?
As I said, the design for that would go through the professional services contracting, and which is managed by public property.
But I'm talking about the construction side?
Yes, the construction side, as I said, would go through procurement.
I'll come back in some other questions.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, state for me each of you your full title and the position you hold, and give me your elevator speech of what you do.
Sure. So, I'm Trevor Day, the Procurement Commissioner, and I manage the procurement department, both operationally, day-to-day operations, and the strategic initiatives that we're implementing moving forward.
And before that, you did what?
I was the Deputy Commissioner.
Okay. All right then, trying to get a picture here, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Jessica DeJesus.
Talk, please speak into the mic.
Good afternoon. I'm Jessica DeJesus. I am the Director of Public Works and Special Services, and I oversee the public works contracts, advertising, disposal.
Advertising and?
And disposal. And inventory.
Thank you.
My name is Nicholas Suzy. I'm the Deputy Procurement Commissioner. I actually was until a couple weeks ago, the Director of Public Works and Special Services, and Jessica's worked with me for the past two years to oversee public works contracting as well as advertising inspections, asset recovery, a whole host of other things. And in my role as Deputy Procurement Commissioner, you know, getting involved in the staffing of the department and making sure that our folks are being heard when they have issues. My door is always open. I'm the HR liaison as well to our OHR folks, and just making sure the department's running, making sure we're getting contracts in place and supporting the Commissioner and my fellow colleagues.
Are you two exempt employees?
We all are.
You are?
Yes. Jessica was promoted from civil service, but we are in exempt positions.
Okay. All right. Commissioner, please give me your philosophy on diversity.
Sure. You know, I think diversity and inclusion is very important. You know, I think, you know, we have a team that is diverse within procurement as a whole and the executive team. I think having people from different backgrounds only elevates, you know, our decision-making and our process and our thinking. You know, and as I said earlier, you know, we made an offer to a woman for another executive team position. She's a woman of minority race, and, you know, I think, you know, I look for that in my executive team. I mean, I think previously we've had an inclusive and diverse executive team, and I look to build that again.
How many persons report to you?
Directly to me? These two people.
Just the two.
Yes.
So, everyone else is civil service in your department?
That's correct.
Okay, very helpful to know. Has, following up on, Councilman Green must have seen my questions before I asked them, because he asked to know the questions that I had. And have you all, to the issue of thinking outside of the box, working outside of the margins, looking for creative, non-traditional ways of getting to the MBE, WBE, DBE world, have you ever participated in MedWeek?
Yes, I personally have.
In what way?
I've attended several different activities. There's often a dinner. I've gone with Angela to those dinners or Angela's staff to those dinners.
Have you ever presented a workshop, a forum?
To my knowledge, procurement has never presented a forum, but I am more than willing to do that and work with the administration or council or, and OEO on doing that.
Well, you can count that as of September 2016?
Great.
It will be a yes.
Great.
We do an effort with PIDC every year and at the naval shipyard, and you will be on the program this year to speak to close to about two hundred MBE, WBEs.
I would love to do that.
Okay. So, to Councilman Green's question again, what innovative, non-traditional activities have you engaged in? Are you familiar with Dela Clark and the Enterprise Center in West Philadelphia?
Yes.
Any work with them at all?
So, we recently had a vendor forum specifically around food. We had forty vendors come, forty or fifty vendors come to that event, which was held in procurement, but we reached out to Dela Clark's organization, and I would say, you know, a handful or more than a handful of people from that organization or associated with that organization came to that forum.
And what's the yield of the effort?
So, we were specifically looking at vending machines and, you know, putting out an opportunity around vending machines, but it was also in conjunction with the Health Department and looking at healthy food initiatives and how we can provide, you know, healthier alternatives out there in vending, and not necessarily traditional vending machines, but little, you know, pop-up marketplaces and things like that.
Very good. That sounds very innovative. As a follow-up to Councilman Green's question too around unbundling, you say we are working at it. What does that mean? And we've heard that throughout the budget hearings, we're working on it, there's a new task, workforce. Are you on the workforce team or the work task team?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, a year from now, we really want to hear tangible outcomes of what the work product looks like, so that we don't have to be redundant in asking these same questions next year.
Absolutely.
Is unbundling on that agenda?
It is. You know, again, you know, we're looking at all the commodities that we put out, and, you know, we're looking at areas that we can debundle and areas that we may bundle things together. I mean, so it's really taking a strategic look at what the city's putting out and really being, you know, having a strategy around those opportunities, because right now I don't think there's a strategy around those opportunities.
I see. So, you say also that forty-four percent of your contracts are under one hundred thousand dollars, and you indicate that you believe the department can do better. So, is there any interface with CDCs? I mean, you have ORC, for example, up in the Northwest, which has done an extraordinary job of rebuilding that community, and there are a number of CDCs of that caliber who would love to hear about contract opportunities under a hundred thousand dollars.
Great. I mean, we can definitely, you know, I mean, if there are CDCs in Philadelphia that, you know, you feel we should be reaching out to, we can do that. I mean, I can also look at, I think there's an association of CDCs.
Yes, it is.
And we can look at their membership and maybe reach out to them to do a better job, absolutely.
I would urge that in addition to speaking with district council members, because there are a number who have active, engaged CDCs. I mean, Councilwoman Sanchez for sure, who were yearning for contracts under a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President. I want to follow up on the Council President's comments about the, I think the Controller's Office that did a study on procurement. I happen to have it in front of me. It's the benefit of having an iPad, I guess. But it's pretty powerful, and one of my questions, I may have missed this answer, but do you know of the procurement that Philadelphia did in the past year? What percentage was from Philadelphia businesses?
I know for the procurement department bids, yes. So, sixty-eight percent of our contract awards were awarded to local registered businesses.
Okay. So, the study the Controller did talks about the nonprofits and the volume of business that they do. And I'm just going to read a few quick things, just, I don't know if this is something in your department that you can convene a meeting or not.
We typically don't award to nonprofit organizations.
No, no. We're talking about the nonprofits in Philadelphia who are buying goods and services outside of the city. That's the report that was done.
Okay.
And the opportunity was like half a billion dollars that they felt we could recapture in the city. I guess my question is, is that something that in your area, you could convene a meeting with the nonprofits and try to get this resolved, or is that out of your jurisdiction?
So, are we asking about?
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
I'm sorry. Are we asking about nonprofits in Philadelphia that have city contracts?
No, I'm going to read you this. The Controller's Office analyzed three billion of procurement data from five of Philadelphia's largest institutions and determined that approximately eight hundred million or twenty-seven percent is spent with Philadelphia vendors, twenty-seven percent. The institutions bought about eight hundred and sixty million in manufactured goods, of which a hundred and thirty-six million was local, fifteen point eight percent local. The analysis suggests more than five hundred and thirty million in total promising opportunity for increasing manufacturing output, and they go through the sectors. But the question, and he has a recommendation here to convene a meeting, and my question is, who's responsible to do that and get this organized?
Right. So, I would say that there, that sounds very intriguing. You know, I think there are some things that the city of Philadelphia needs to do to improve their contracting, and if we can get to a point where we fix those things and doing, in coordination, I think, with the Commerce Department, you know, engaging some of those local businesses and talking about that, you know, is something that sounds intriguing, but my focus right now is really to improve our processing and our communication on our contract opportunities. So, I can't commit to that. I find that very intriguing, but again, you know, maybe ask that same question next year, and we may be in a different, you know, sort of stance.
Offline, give me your email address. I'll send you this report.
Okay.
Because this is, there's valuable information here that we should, if the Controller's Office is doing this work, we should be using, not just for the nonprofits, but even in the city of Philadelphia.
Okay, all right.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you for pulling that information up. Appreciate it. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to follow up on a question, a couple questions that Councilman Brown raised. From your perspective, how do you see the role of procurement as it comes to or pertains to economic development in the city of Philadelphia?
I think that was the first question that was asked by Council President Clark. So, I think the fact that the city, the procurement department, the city of Philadelphia awards contracts, and we're awarding contract, and if we're awarding contracts to local businesses, we're engaging in economic development activities.
And you've been, and how long have you been with the procurement department?
I've been with the procurement department since 2011, says my staff.
Can you give me some perspective on the role procurement has taken in the past in reference to enforcement of issues as it pertains to diversity or OEO issues?
The perspective that we've taken in the past?
Right, past, right.
I mean, I don't know, you know, what you're referencing.
Or matters you've been involved in from an enforcement perspective. What I've heard from various businesses over the years that they are included on projects as part of an RFP, but then they may or may not be used going forward. Some entities may use that as a pattern or practice. The Controller's Office just testified early in a week regarding some of their involvement from an enforcement perspective, and I wanted to get your perspective since you've been with procurement since 2011, your involvement or perspective in that regard.
Sure. I mean, we rely upon the departments who are ordering off of the contracts to inform us of any contract requirements that are being broken, or requiring the vendor or the subcontractor to report to us. And really, the way that the contracts are managed, they're managed by each department for which the contract has been awarded. You know, I know OEO has some responsibility for compliance of minority and women participation. I believe they've done some, they've changed some of their practices and increased their efforts around compliance.
So, because of your, what I'm hearing from your statement, that's mostly on a department level, so you really haven't had that much involvement from an enforcement perspective regarding issues that may go up to either Controller's Office or Inspector General's Office?
So, I mean, enforcement could come in from a variety of levels. It could come in without the Inspector General's Office or without Controller's Office being involved. I mean, there's a whole, you know, sort of spectrum of issues that could come up on any contract, and some of them we deal with by bringing the vendors in, discussing. Some of them, we, the departments send them a letter, you know, asking them to cure the contract. Sometimes procurement sends them a cure letter. Sometimes procurement sends them a letter to threaten canceling the contract or debarbing them. So, it could be, there's a whole spectrum of issues. I mean, I can't, you know, go through each individual alternative.
So, how many matters have you been involved in where you took the role or been involved in a role where procurement made a decision for disbarment?
A handful of.
Just give me a range or a number.
Five to ten.
And the five to ten that procurement took the decision to recommend disbarment?
Anywhere from, you know, threatening debarment to debarbing them, yes.
And so, how many were actually disbarred?
Since I've been at procurement, I think we've had three vendors that have been debarred.
And how many contracts do you let on an annual basis?
On an annual basis, probably about, you know, somewhere between three hundred to three hundred and fifty contracts annually, give or take.
And as to procurement, what about through other departments, just on a macro from the city as a whole?
I don't know the answer to that question. I really don't.
And so, based on your earlier statement about being more proactive and getting information out to various entities about the opportunities, do you also see as your role at procurement to be more proactive in letting various contractors, subcontractors know to contact you when there's been issues of fraud or other type of malfeasance?
Absolutely. And some of those, you know, they're, some of them are referred to the IG's office, or some of them are referred to OEO, and some of them are handled by procurement. So, yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kim.
Hello, how are you? One of my questions has to do with the fact that many businesses feel so confused by the whole procurement process and often don't have a lot of clarity about why they did or did not win a particular bid and what the standards are for winning bids. Have we ever done a process where as we might unseal successful bids at the close of a project to help better inform folks and give some insight into what actually qualifies as a winning bid, what the parameters might have been, so that, you know, more people understand what the bidding process, what went into determining what created a winning bid?
Yes. So, I agree with you that there is, it's confusing. It's not very clear. There's, you know, two sets of contracts that the city puts out. We don't handle them the same, and so I think, you know, creating that clarity and creating a sense of where we can communicate and how we can communicate better on both sets of contracts, and then looking at changes that we can make to, you know, make it more transparent and make it more, make it easier to understand and better, and easier to know what the deficient easier to know what the deficiencies were in their proposals. With procurement contracts, uh, by the time, any, any, any vendor that does not win a bid, um, can, you know, we, we publicly read people's proposals. So A, if they attended the, the bid opening, they know right then and there who, who the apparent low bidder is. Now, we also do, we deter, we make a determination when we, um, review the bids and, you know, if the apparent low bidder did not submit something that's required for the bid, or, you know, add some sort of responsibility issue or responsive initia, issue, we send them a notification and we say, you're not, you were found not responsive, you're in that, you're found not responsible. Um, if they're found not responsible, they can appeal that. Um, if they're not responsive, it's not appealable, um, but they're given notification of that, of that determination. Um, with, and then, once the contract is conformed, all of our, all of our records are public. Um, you know, they, people, people call us all the time, constantly. People come in the office and ask for records. We, we have a customer service unit that I get compliments on. It's, it's really the, it's really the only unit that, you know, in my department that I consistently get compliments on. Um, and so they will, they will help them, um, they will pull those records, they will review those records with them, uh, you know, I think we, we do a pretty good job of doing that.
So, given the fact that so many people feel like the bidding process is still mysterious and slightly elusive for them, what suggestions would you have for local businesses to better understand that? I was trying to determine whether, like, a more reverse process would help, um, bring some clarity to the situation, provide a set of standards, and, um, be able to assist folks, but if, if that's not the best way, since you're already doing that, um, really well, then what would you recommend as being another alternative?
Well, I mean, when I, when I'm talking, I, you know, we're, we're talking about forty percent, forty to fifty percent of the, of the city's contracts are put through procurement. So there's another fifty to sixty percent of contracts, and, and I don't know, you know, how those are handled. They're handled individually by each department, um, so how they handle them, you know, is that, I think there is, there's no clarity around that, and there's no standardization around that. Um, or, or maybe there is, but it's not, you know, it's not, uh, communicated. Um, so I, I do think that we need to have a better...
Could you just, I'm, I'm new?
Yes.
Could you give some examples of, of types of contracts that might go, that would not go through procurement, like no bid contracts, or...
Sure, yes. So anything that's considered, put out as an RFP, um, as a professional service, um, so anything from engineering services, architectural services, consulting services, um, you know, fi, um, I don't know what else.
Medical services, DHS services.
Yeah.
Um, I'd say, cause the bulk's, sorry, apologies. Uh, so medical services, DHS services, um, it, it's kind of runs the gamut of any type of professional service you might think of is gonna be put out as an RFP. Uh, and so we're seeing, we're doing mostly lowest responsive, responsible bidder, so that's the, the terminology we use a lot, and those are commodities-based contracts, uh, very standard maintenance contracts, uh, mostly things that can be very defined upfront, uh, are the types of contracts you would want to put through the sealed bid process.
Mm-hmm.
And things that, um, are undefined, that a, a professional service would be needed for, uh, that you can't maybe spec out all upfront, are normally better to be put through an RFP process. And that's, that's what, oh, and, and T. David's here from, who oversees that whole process for the city, so he can probably speak better to, to that than I can.
Hello.
Good afternoon, uh, Councilwoman. My name is, uh, T. David Williams, uh, Director of the Contracting Unit. Uh, in terms of professional services RFPs, we have a couple of ways to obtain a contract for professional services, but the majority of those, uh, contracts are obtained through RFPs, which according to Chapter seventeen, fourteen hundred of the Philadelphia Code are required to be open and transparent. They are published, the RFPs are published on our website, E-Contract Philly. Uh, one of the absolute requirements of Chapter seventeen, fourteen hundred is that we list, uh, the reasons that the winner won and, uh, conversely, the losers lost. Uh, and not to really call them winners or losers, but the person who is awarded, um, that information is, is set out on the system. So what happens is a department puts together an RFP, and my unit reviews those RFPs before they are, are published. We have twelve standard selection criteria that we use, although departments, uh, because these are individualized services and qualitatively based, um, make their own determinations about what vendor they want to use. Cost is a component, but not always the ultimate, uh, component. At the end of the process, once the award closes electronically on E-Contract Philly, uh, there's a period where the departments review the proposals that were submitted. They may call individuals in or companies in for interviews or, or presentations. Once that happens, then the department makes an award. An actual award goes out on E-Contract Philly to, to notify the public that the department intends to contract with this particular vendor. And that award, notice of award, also lists the reasons why. Uh, by code, that award has to stay up for at least eight days before the contract is conformed, and then the negotiation process begins and the contract conformance process occurs. At any point in time, a vendor who is not awarded may ask what happened, why they were not awarded. Uh, as a matter of policy, uh, I'm sorry, as a matter of Chapter seventeen, fourteen hundred, that information is not public until the contract is conformed, and there's a policy reason for that. You do not want to have disruptions, um, for city employees as they are trying to conduct the city business. They want to get the vendor that they've chosen out, and then, um, the information is then, uh, public, and vendors can pull that information, they can make a request for that information. They can also request the department to meet with them and review with them, not why the winner was selected so much, but why they were not selected. And I know that Ms. Dowe Burton, uh, really encourages women and minority-owned businesses to seek her out if they have any questions as to why they were not selected.
So you're talking specifically about professional services contracts, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And so there are other categories of contracts that also exist, like services and supplies. Professional services actually has a fairly decent opening for local and, um, minority business contracts, but the areas which seem very closed and fixed are these other areas. Do they go through procurement, or do they go through RFP?
So, sir, supply, services and supplies and equipment comes through procurement, yes. And, and, I mean, with regard to that specifically, um, I would say that's what we're looking at, in, with our working group, in improving, um, our marketing around those opportunities. Um, you know, we don't, we, we, we don't get a lot of competition on, on a lot of those opportunities, so I think, you know, part of what we've been doing over the last several months is really marketing the areas that we get limited competition and saying, listen, you know, if you're a local business, if, if you're a minority or women-owned business, like, if you apply for this opportunity, you may have a thirty percent chance of winning it, um, because we're only getting two other responses, um, which is, you know, it, it really opens some eyes. Um, I mean, I think additionally, you know, we need, we need to look at, you know, what are we asking vendors to agree to for those contracts? Because they are a sealed bid, they have to agree to our terms and conditions upfront, um, and a lot of vendors don't want to agree to our terms and conditions upfront.
I'll have more questions after the next round, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds-Greene.
Okay. Follow up with Councilman Green's question. Who is the enforcer when it comes to identifying those primes who are in violation and, um, applying a fine or whatever the, the, the penalty remedy is? Who ultimately is the bottom-line enforcer?
So, I, I think the, the bottom-line enforcer is, if it's a procurement contract, is procurement because we can debar them or cancel the contract.
Mm-hmm.
However, you know, there's, um, you know, the, the operating department who's ordering the items, if they're not satisfied with the service of that vendor, or they don't feel like that vendor is fulfilling their contract opportu, their contract requirements, you know, that's something that they need to communicate to procurement. Um, so, and then additionally, you know, or, you know, if we have a subcontractor, they may go to OEO and communicate that to OEO, and then OEO will try to resolve that, that issue. If they can't resolve it, they'll, they'll, they'll involve procurement as well.
Okay. Um, and, and I do know that OEO will try to revolve, resolve those kind of matters, cause I, I actually had to, um, seek the assistance of Angela Dowe Burton in her office for primes, law firms, who were not paying their subs, who were women, and they've had a lot of paper games going back and forth, and, and it required, uh, OEO stepping in to, to, um, to just settle it. So I'm, I'm very, very much aware of their need for interference at those times. Um, what does it, so what do, what do you, what does your department do to ensure that primes are promptly paying their, their subs? Any mechanisms or red flags in place, triggers that let you know that, um, what's in the system that lets you know that, uh, primes are not honoring up?
Right. I mean, the current structure right now is, uh, at, at least for minority and women-owned businesses, um, you know, Angela, OEO has a compliance system where they're pulling all the payments of the city of Philadelphia.
I see.
And the primes are validating, you know, how much of that is going to a, a minority or woman-owned sub, and then those subs are going in and validating that, or invalidating that, and that's currently the structure of how that gets handled.
So if a prime is habitually late in paying their sub, is this considered, um, by the department for future contracts they may be up, where they may be up for consideration?
It, it, it could be, yes.
You say could be?
Yes.
Could be considered.
It's not, it's not, I haven't heard of, uh, that situation occurring, but it absolutely could impact our awards in, in the future.
And you provided some numbers to Councilman Green regarding the number of, uh, instances where the contracts were terminated.
Well, I mean, I, I would say, you know, threatened to be terminated or terminated, yes.
So what happens with the threat?
They, they, they cure the, the, the situation, so they resolve the situation.
Okay. Um, I want to drill down a little, uh, with regards to professional contracts, and, uh, this is a, an anecdote that I've heard from a number of lawyers from the major law firms. So our government does a lot of big business with major law firms, um, and the city solicitor may be the more appropriate person to pose this question to, but what we learn is that the city, law firms get fat on the city of Philadelphia, and when those contracts go to those law firms, they never see the face of a minority lawyer in that law firm or a, a, a female, uh, lawyer in that law firm. So what can we do to drill down to, with those law firms that get great deals from the city, yet do not have an inkling to be thinking about with, uh, women and minority lawyers?
So, I think, um, either T. David or Angela's better situated to answer that question.
Thank you. My name is Angela Dowe Burton, I'm Executive Director for the Office of Economic Opportunity. Councilwoman, I thank you for the question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one of the things that the Office of Economic Opportunity did a few years ago was to look at the contracts awarded by our law department and work with the law department to go to those law firms that we did business with, and encourage those, those firms to put their business through minority or women partners.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we find that many law firms operate as an umbrella organization where each of the partners are in effect an enterprise unto themselves, and they're building business, and they reap the rewards of bonuses, et cetera, based on the size of, of their, uh, business generated. And we want more minorities and women to be promoted, number one, within law firms and other professional firms like architecture and engineering into the role of partners.
Mm-hmm. That's contrary to, to the information that, that I've learned over the past many years. So what level of reach do we have as, as a city to say, we're giving you this business, the law department, like all departments, have, uh, X number of, of goals, if you will? How far can, can we as a government go, you specifically in your role? Right. Or, or whoever the mayor would designate, to make it clear that, we know what the, the situation is with, with women owned, I mean, with women partners in, in, in law firms across the city?
Sure.
That's like trying to eat an elephant.
Right.
So recognizing we're not gonna get there, many are not gonna do that on their own, yet you still want work, business opportunities from the city, what can we do as a city to say, partners aside, we want, uh, minority lawyers and women in your firms to have access to these city taxpayer dollars in this contract?
Well, one of the things that we've done is make sure, and we report it in our annual report, those law firms that have women and minorities who are in fact partners, who are not just partners, but the billable partner, the partner that's gonna get credit for the business.
Okay.
And the financial bonuses associated with that business. So it's clearly documented in each of our annual reports.
Is clearly what?
Documented. We document the law firm along with the attorney, who is the partner getting the credit, um, for the city's business. And it has been very productive working with the city's Solicitor's Office. Shelley Smith and I, um, and attorneys within the law department have moved jointly...
Okay.
...to enforce that kind of, um, partnering with law firms over the last few years.
And so what are the trends?
So the trends are those, those firms that have minority, um, or women firm, uh, partners are giving them the billable credit and we're reporting it. Um, are we as effective as we'd like to be? No. We'll keep moving that rock. We're certainly, uh, in discussions right now with Nolan Atkinson to talk about...
Okay.
...how we roll this strategy out even farther with our, um, our, um, alliance partners across the region, whether it's the anchor institutions like the universities and, and the medical institutions who do business with legal firms. How do we get more of that business to go to minorities and women within those, those organizations?
Did that bell ring?
Sorry?
Did the bell ring? It did? Okay, I can't remember.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Okay. All right, then, thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Tom Berger.
Mr. President, thank you. In regards to procurement, uh, I wanted to pursue looking into the matching bid process for Philadelphia-based companies. I was told that this type of bidding would lead to unbalanced bids, but doesn't reverse auctioning also lead to unbalanced bids, but without the added benefit of helping a Philadelphia-based company?
So, uh, so the question is, would, does reverse auctions result in unbalanced bids?
Yeah, and, and, and without helping Philadelphia-based companies. I think, I think, uh, you know, the, the opportunity for a Philadelphia-based company to, you know, take another look at this and have a chance at the, uh, opportunity, particularly within a certain percentage points.
Yeah.
I think is, is helpful. I, I think, as, as, in many ways, we're a company too, and we should be doing business, I mean, this, this comes from my Chamber of Commerce background, it is best to do business with those who do business with you.
Mm-hmm.
And so helping Philadelphia-based companies, the very populations that, that live here, creating jobs, is, is important to me, and, uh, if we go to, uh, you know, that, that process, which, uh, you know, is the opportunity to match that, I was told by your office that that would lead to unbalanced bids.
So...
But, but if we just go to, to, to the, the answer to that was that you were going then to the re, the, the, the reverse auctioning process, put that as a procedure that won't help Philadelphia-based companies?
Right. Well, it, it may or may not help Philadelphia-based companies, so, um, you know, the, I just want to state again, you know, we did award, sixty-eight percent of our total contracts award, awards were, were awarded to local registered businesses, uh, in calendar year two thousand and fifteen.
In the city?
In the city, registered businesses. Um, so, which, you know, that, that, is that seventy-five percent or a hundred percent? No. Um, but it is sixty-eight percent of our total contract awards. Um, so reverse auction, you know, we need to, we're gonna take a phased approach about, um, implementing reverse auctions. Uh, I, I think we need to, to do... They're committing to those prices, and they're participating in this reverse auction, and they're guaranteeing those prices under contract.
Understood.
And so I think, you know, your point of, could this be an unbalanced bid? Yes, it could be. You know, we did a pilot program a couple of years ago. We had one contract, and I don't know if it was a result of the reverse auction, or if it was a result of the vendor that we had under contract, but, you know, essentially they were trying to squeeze out additional costs once they got the contract in place. So, you know, it was a service contract, and so something that used to take, you know, an hour to do, then took three hours to do. And so they had bid down, you know, their price, that it was unreasonable for them to sort of be under contract. And we ended up, you know, not renewing that contract and rebidding it out. And I think, you know, your point of, you know, is reverse auction, could it result in an unbalanced bid? Yes, I think it could. And I think we need to do a good job of explaining to the vendors who are participating in that auction, like, you are committing to these prices, and this is what that means. Because the city doesn't want to get into a contract that doesn't work for the vendor, because then it's a contract that doesn't work for the city.
Understood. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Commissioner, I'm actually working on some gun legislation. Look out.
Which legislation? Sorry?
Gun legislation.
Gun legislation. Okay.
So, I was going to ask you a couple of questions. What do you deem, I know you have to, under law, do lowest responsible bidder with respects to your procurement practice, what parameters do you believe are around the term responsible?
Um...
Because that's always, that's always a word that has intrigued me.
It's a very intriguing word. So, I mean, responsible, you know, can be defined a variety of different ways, and oftentimes, you know, that is defined in the bid, individual bid document, and that may be, you have four years of experience operating in this business, you have, you know, 20 pieces of this set of equipment. So responsible, or responsibility can mean a variety of items, and it depends from bid to bid, what responsibility could mean.
Okay. So if there is, if we deem that you are not responsible, if you have not shown in your history of practices, whatever field you may be in, the willingness or the ability, or a history of having the appropriate diversity within your workforce or other aspects of that, do you deem that to be potentially a part of the responsible bid requirement?
I think those are interesting questions, and I think, you know, that's, I think this is a question that we could look at, and the law department could look at, because I think there are, you know, sort of state and federal laws that we have to comply with. And so long as we're not breaking any of those laws, then, you know, we absolutely could look at something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, from our perspective, responsible, and I think all of us is being responsible as it relates to giving opportunities to people, but I don't ever require, I mean, we talk about a series, like, we had an equal opportunity plan with respects to identifying your strategies of having a diverse workforce based on your contract. And I'm thinking that if, within that, I would think that if you comply, or show that you have attempted to comply with the EOP plan, that would be deemed responsible. So can you kind of look at that from your perspective, from a procurement perspective? Because we really like to have that as a part of the process, now that we now have the labor standards, the department will be the enforcement arm of all of these various EOPs that have been submitted.
Sure. Yeah, and I mean, I think, you know, whether we do it as part of responsibility, or we do it on evaluating vendors who are under contract, and whether they're, how we're rating them, and currently we don't really have a practice for rating vendors. And so, you know, part of an e-procurement system is, you know, giving the city the inability to say, this vendor is really great, and here's why they're really great. And so that can come into play with responsibility.
Yeah, that's...
So absolutely.
So can you give us, just think about it?
Yeah.
Give us a sense of whether or not that's something, as you know?
Sure.
Guns, is actually a part of, so, there are certain things that we can't, can't do with respects to guns. I know we have this dispute with the state, and we'll probably, hopefully, at some point end up in court. As we, we're moving towards that process a few years back, that's before I was the council president, so I wasn't as responsible as I am now. I used to do all kind of crazy stuff. But the reality is that we had it teed up all the way up to, I think, the, one of the appellate courts, and I think the next step was actually the Supreme Court, but the entity, which was the NRA at the time, didn't have standing, so we didn't move forward. Anyway, it's a long story. So, with respects to our purchasing of weapons for the Philadelphia police, sheriffs, and all of the other entities that we procure weapons and ammunition for, as it relates to us having a quote-unquote "responsible bidder," is that something that, and I kind of answered this already, if that was a part of that process, I'm assuming that the lowest responsible bidder?
Yes, yes. I mean, but when we talk about responsibility too, I mean, really you're talking about qualifications of a vendor, and those qualifications are, you know, for something like guns and ammunition, you know, we look to the police department or the sheriff's department to help develop those specifications.
So, I mean, well, you know, you had a presidential candidate said another presidential candidate was not responsible, and then you added all kind of other things, a person was in office, what, in politics for 30 years, senators, and I'm not trying to get political. So being qualified is based on your perspective. So if you have a retailer or wholesaler that sells ammunition, guns, and all of that, and they have had a history of irresponsible behavior in terms of who they sold the weapons to, and who they sold ammunition to, and there's been documented instances, when you, could you stress and say that person is not a responsible purveyor of weapons and ammunition?
I mean, if they've broken the law, yeah, I would agree with you that they would not be responsible.
And civil, criminal or civil, or both?
Either, you know, probably, if they, you know, if the owner or the president of the company, you know, has, you know, some sort of legal history, and, you know, and it comes into play with the operations or the award of the bid, yes, that we could find them not responsible.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to follow up on the other question. So, you know, we were discussing a little bit about your department's efforts to expand opportunities, particularly in certain areas, so service supply and equipment, I think, and public works are other areas where procurement has a real need to try to expand. And could you be more specific about what measures you are looking at pursuing, and what you think the analysis is on the obstacles in those particular areas?
Sure. So, I mean, obstacles, I think there are many obstacles, and some of them are related to process, some of them are related to infrastructure or systems that are obsolete or non-existent, and some of them are terms that are included in our contract, you know, something like, so we, by charter, we must charge a processing fee in order for bids to be processed through the procurement department. So we've reduced that, but we still have to charge a fee. And, you know, it's a service that we provide. I would rather not charge a fee, but by charter, we must charge a fee. So, you know, it's just, and then...
How much is that fee?
Twenty-five dollars. But also bid security is something that's required by charter. So, you know, in order to bid with the city of Philadelphia procurement department, you have to pay a fee, not for the processing of the contract, but to bid, to submit for the bid. And for public works, that's a common practice. For service supplies and equipment, it's not a common practice, yet we must do it by charter. So, you know, all of these things, you know, really inhibit vendors from doing business because we're not, you know, having a current day practice of what's best models, what's the best model for contracting out there. So I think, you know, as part of the working groups that, you know, the chief administrative officer and procurement and the contracting unit is looking at are a lot of those things. You know, A, what are the charter requirements that we require? Are they mandated? You know, we belong to an association or an institute, for the National Institute for Governmental Purchasing, that really sort of lays out a lot of best practices. So it's sort of looking at ours and overlaying, you know, their requirements and saying, where are we different, where are we the same, where can we improve? So that's part of the practice or process that we're...
And specifically, what are you doing to address it?
So these working groups that the chief administrative officer, you know, they're actionable working groups. I mean, we've already made some changes. I mean, in our public works area, we've, you know, we're looking at a project management approach about how we process, and we've reduced our processing time by 20%, 32 days, and really, you know, increasing that and creating efficiencies. So, I mean, and that came all, all came out of a lot of what we're looking at for these working groups. So I think there's going to be a whole set of recommendations. I mean, I think we have said in the past, and will continue to say this, you know, we will present that to council. We have invited council representatives to, you know, sort of sit and participate in some of those, but we will report back, you know, our recommendations. We're also looking at, you know, getting feedback from vendors, because we don't want to make a decision, you know, and a whole set of decisions that aren't going to work for vendors. We want vendors to compete for our work.
So I guess the other area that I'm trying to understand a little bit better is, you know, 65% of our departments don't really make goals in terms of MWBE participation, so we only have about a third of them that actually do it. But if you were to even factor in the percentage, or the amount of contracts that are considered exempt from that, it adds to that significantly. So, for example, the managing director's office has almost its entire budget, just a million out of $63 million is not exempt. You know, you've got departments like the Free Library, where a million out of a two-and-a-half million dollar budget is exempt from the MWBE. And what I think OEO has documented is, is that over the years, for example, if you took the managing director's office, it's shown that over the years, the number of contracts that are exempt has actually started to go down. And so one of the questions is, is whether your department is looking very closely at the exemptions of these areas, and whether they are truly exempt contracts, you know, because they're a sizable amount of money, prisons is enormous, you know, and I'm assuming they relate back to these specific areas of service supplies and equipment.
Sure.
Could relate back to public works, but have you done an analysis, and do you continue to do a rigorous rechecking of these exempted contracts about whether they ought to be truly exempt?
So, I mean, I can speak a little bit to this, but Angela Dow Burton may want to, you know, speak further. I mean, with regard to the exemptions, I mean, my understanding is that's looked at on at least an annual basis, if not, you know, more often than that, you know, biannual or quarterly. Every bid opportunity that we put out, the, you know, we, we have, you know, commodities and lists of commodities that, you know, OEO is constantly looking at every six months and saying, these areas, you know, we don't have a lot of registered businesses, so those are, you know, best in good faith efforts. These areas, we have a lot of businesses that are registered, you know, and we're going to put, you know, required participation rates on those. So that's being done as a part of practice, you know, all the time.
I mean, one of the things that came up yesterday was that Commissioner Epps from the Commerce Department said that he was not interested in expanding the registry, that the registry was not, the expansion of the registry was not a top priority. And if that's the case, that, you know, these are the businesses that are registered, particularly in departments like, you know, the ones that we struggle with, whether that's service supplies and equipment, and, you know, it's even disappointing to see, like, small order purchases, when we talk about debundling, to see whether that's going to help with it. African-Americans represent 2.5% of small order purchase contracts that are delivered, and it's just, you know, even when we debundle and make it possible for people to bid on small amounts, we're not seeing movement. And so, but if you're saying the registry is not showing availability, then aren't we, why are we not having a focus on expansion of the registry? Why did the Commerce Director close that conversation down?
Thank you very much for the question, Councilwoman. Angela Dow Burton, Executive Director for the Office of Economic Opportunity. There were a couple of things that I think the Commerce Director was responding to. Initially, the administration set a goal of 50% expansion of the OEO registry. Over the last six years, we've grown the registry by 82%. A third of it is represented by companies located within the city of Philadelphia, ZIP code 191. Another third is in the 11-county metropolitan statistical area, and the rest is in New Jersey, New York, Delaware, et cetera. His focus is on helping to build the companies that are located locally. And so he wasn't saying so much, don't expand the registry, it's not going to be a top priority to expand it by 50%. But there is a priority that we have in terms of looking at opportunities for new markets and business development for minorities and women who want to get into the market and do business with the city and other institutions around this region. The exempt contracts that you find in the annual report, and they're listed in detail here, include $62 million, that's an electric bill that the managing director's office pays for. But it also includes things like helicopters and sludge barge rental facilities, software that's proprietary, that minorities or women do not have the keys to. And so these are areas where we have identified as few or no opportunity for minorities and women to participate. We will constantly enter the market, and through our disparity studies, through our benchmarking initiatives with our states and cities, we go out to them and say, we've got a contract worth $20 million for water treatment chemicals. Who do you buy yours from? Are any of them minorities and women? And doesn't make sense to include those kinds of dollars when we're trying to evaluate the productivity and the performance of a department where we have few or no minorities to actually participate in the process? So we'll continue to work to get them into the process, but until we can do that, we have identified them as exempt, and we publicize them.
Yeah, and, you know, I'll conclude, but I think part of the issue is that I don't think that there's any question about the interest in growing local businesses and MWBE. I guess I'm questioning because some of your data indicates that particularly, I think it was the managing director's office, I'll relook at that, but showed declining levels of exempt contracts over time. So clearly, this is not a fixed position, it's not, it's not always the case, and what I would like to know is making sure that we have a rigorous attention to it and an analysis of the market that is continuing and ongoing, and also clearly that we're expanding efforts to really look for diverse communities in these particular areas where we have difficulty. We also know that clearly on some areas, like maybe Asian-Americans in particular, and to some extent Hispanics in certain areas, we're not, we're maybe approximating utilization, but we're not hitting availability. So we know that we have a gap there. We have a learning gap and an understanding gap. And, you know, I think that that's an important thing for us to try and figure that out, because we're not making enough advances, clearly. I mean, it is so depressing to see, like, 2.5% African-Americans on small order purchases. I mean, it is so depressing to see, like, 2.5% African Americans on small order purchases of 32,000 when a lot of people feel like it's been an effort to debundle.
I really want to check that number with you.
Okay.
There are transactions that are less than $32,000. There's over $1.5 million, and I think African Americans do have a slightly higher, and I will verify that number for you, but I think it's a little higher than the 2% that you're referring to.
Councilwoman, thank you.
Thank you.
We remind our, my friends and colleagues, we still have two departments left. All right, thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Tottenberger.
Thank you, Council President. Long ago, in 1983, 84, I worked here for City Councilwoman Joan Krajewski, and it was the time of the Philadelphia subway contract. I'm not sure if the rules still apply, but I do have a question at the end of it, but it's still a very important story because it affected our city deeply. I believe it's still the practice that the actual subway cars, even though run by SEPTA, are actually property of the City of Philadelphia. That's how it was then. I'm not sure if it still is. That's not even my question. Bud Company was one of two remaining railcar companies in the United States at the time. The other one was in Buffalo, New York. And the other bidder, the bidder on this was from Kawasaki, who ultimately won that bid because, as defined earlier by Council President, you know, they were the lowest responsible bid. I'm still kind of foggy on all that. Since that time, Bud Company closed up, I think a result of losing that. I couldn't say that's the only thing, but they closed up. Today, there is an abandoned golf course that brings no revenue to the City of Philadelphia other than real estate tax, and nobody works there. And at one time, there probably was near 1,000 people that worked there. If that process were to go on today, what advantages would the Bud Company have over a company in Kawasaki, Japan, if the bidding process were held today?
And where was the Bud Company located?
Bud Company was located in northeast Philadelphia, Red Lion Road.
Okay. So there's a preference in place for local businesses, and again, I'm talking about, you know, city let bids, so I don't know if SEPTA has the same rules.
No, no, but, no, no. I was here at that, at that time, the City of Philadelphia bought those railcars.
Okay.
They were not, they are not property of SEPTA. I don't think to this day they're property of SEPTA.
Okay. So, you know, if they're let by, if the City of Philadelphia let a bid, there's a 5% preference for any bids over $1 million and a 10% preference for any bid under $1 million. And that's the preference that they would receive.
Okay. I thank you on that. One note of clarification, you had mentioned that 68% of bids were won by Philadelphia companies. A dollar amount, or is that the actual bidder?
That's a dollar amount.
As a dollar amount. So do you ever have that statistic broken down on actual bidders from Philadelphia? Vendors that come from the city?
We can, we can work on that for you.
I would like to see that. I think that would be good to share with the council, the whole. Mr. President, I am finished. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman, did you, we have two more departments left.
I have just a data request.
All right, I'll get to that.
I was wondering if your department could share its language access plans and procedures for outreach? I think it's great that you're doing, making some effort at doing expanded outreach. I think that was in your testimony, but it would be helpful to know what your plans are for language access, bilingual staffing, and whether your department's been fully trained on language line and outreach, and whether contracts and bidding and information that goes out is done in multiple languages as well.
Okay. We'll report that back to you.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, thank you, Councilwoman. I have no more questions. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Next up, we have HR.
Good afternoon.
Oh, good afternoon. Good afternoon, President Clark and members of City Council. My name is Marsha Green Jones, and I'm the Acting Deputy for Human Resources. With me today, can everyone hear me? With me today are Deputy Human Resources Director Brian Albert, Maria Agilakis, Cecilia Leary, Sheila Pate, and Dr. George Hayes. Our Director of Medical Services and other members of my senior management team, I am pleased to provide you with a testimony on the Office of Human Resources Fiscal Year 2017 operating budget. So I'll start off with a few initiatives. Supporting the business needs of the City of Philadelphia, OHR has initiated a number of programs which are customer focused and also focused upon improving efficiencies. In FY 15 and 16, the Benefits Office was successful in meeting the federally mandated deadline of March 31st for a distribution of over 30,000 1095Cs to active retiree and terminated associates. We initiated a wellness newsletter to encourage employees to improve their wellness participation as well as to address wellness questions and issues. We're conducting monthly luncheon learns, which thus far have actually focused upon employees knowing their numbers. As we all know, well employees also mean presenteeism in the workplace. Also in 2016, we've actually initiated IVF as a benefit, which introduced a $20,000 life cap. Fifteen thousand of those dollars were distributed to medical, and 5,000K was distributed to RX prescription benefits. The percentage of civil service exams held for FY 11 actually has improved. In FY 11, we actually only proceeded and made 30% of these on time. We've moved thus far in FY 17 to 95.7% of those exams being arranged on time. The average time of establishment of lists compared to the closure date in FY 08, it was 85 days from the date of announcement. Today, in FY 15, it was 45.3 days, and for the first half of FY 16, that decreased to 42 days. We meet annually, we meet twice a year with departments to plan workforce hiring and planning needs. In FY 15, we received 63,000 applications and tested 20,000 applicants. Civil service regulations are on a regular basis reviewed. This year, we included five new regulations to improve bilingual testing, awarded additional points to Peace Corps volunteers to encourage people to complete volunteer service, because that's somewhat similar to what we do here when you work for the City of Philadelphia. You're actually volunteering, you're actually giving service to people. There were 23 civil service regulations that were revised in FY 16. We streamlined the classification process, reducing specialized classes, which allowed us to create eligibility lists more quickly, reducing the time to hire. FY 16, there were 154 classifications, and pay items have been approved by the Civil Service Commission and the Ad Board. Recruitment has continued to be a challenge for us, and that we have not had a budget since 1990. Despite this issue, we've been able to participate in 15 job fairs. In FY 16, we expect this number to double. We've actually been to churches, colleges, universities, technical schools, diverse groups including LGBT, veterans programs. We have monthly postings in terms of job, in terms of LinkedIn, Facebook, Twitter, media postings in Russian, Chinese, and French. In FY 16, we've established 45 jobs that require bilingual training. Year-to-date for FY 16, in civil service, we actually have recruited 821 minorities, or 61.64% of those hired in FY 16 have been minorities. For exempt employees, FY 16, we've actually hired 160 minority exempts, or 34.6% of those that are hired. So, one of the things that I'd like to also make mention of is during the testimony earlier this morning, Chief Administrative Officer, actually, and we talked about the open competitive test, and there were some questions about it from Councilwoman Cionas relative to, it was an open competitive exam. And I wanted to make a couple of points of clarification relative to that exam to ensure that everyone, to allied people's fears in terms of the actual testing process. So I'm going to call on Maria Agilakis to speak to that point.
Good afternoon, Councilperson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon. Earlier this afternoon, there was a question about an open competitive test for the utility maintenance trainee class, and I believe the individuals who were asked were not really familiar with the exam announcement. So I'm going to provide some information on that particular exam announcement and the type of candidates that qualify for this exam. So the exam was announced for the Water Department, and although it is open competitive, the Water Department has a very diverse program where they recruit high school interns and provide the training to them, and then when those, when those individuals have received the 450 hours of training, then they ask us to announce the exam. It needs to be announced open competitive because these high school interns are not permanent civil service employees. So, in this instance, the exam was announced, four candidates were qualified to sit for the exam, and they are currently on the list. Three of those have been certified after the department. The Water Department's program is actually a diversity recruitment program. So they go to local area high schools and increase diversment in their department through the use of this class specification. Currently, there are 16 employees in the Water Department, and as of, I believe, last month, the Department of Public Property also asked if they can use this class specification for their department as well. So this class is actually going to be appearing on the May civil service agenda with other requirements for the Department of Public Property, which their training program is 390 hours. So I just wanted to explain that a little bit. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Councilwoman is obviously not here. You do me a favor, can you get to her office? Because she asked that specific question.
Sure.
Just kind of give her that.
Sure.
That'd be helpful. Thank you. A couple quickly. During the, over the last couple of months, there was some discussion about possibly changing some of the civil service regulations to give broader opportunities. As an example, in the Department of Recreation, there was this concern about the requirements for rec leaders, rec leader 1, 2, 3, and our inability to have people who actually, literally, have been members of the advisory councils for ages, and they actually, in a lot of instances, do more work at the rec center than the person that gets paid. And it was always, you know, by my mind, we had these regs, that person couldn't gain access. Are you a part of those discussions as relates to HR and changing some of the civil service regs?
I'm not really.
Your office or?
So we would be part of those discussions, except I'm not really familiar with the scenario that you're presenting today.
Really?
No. We have not been involved in those discussions.
That's a little concerning to me, given what your role is, HR, in terms of, all In terms, you've kind of touched on a little bit about recruiting, and my assumption is that you're working closely with the Philadelphia School District?
Well, in the instance that Maria reported upon, we are the actual department, the commission is actually working with the school district. They helped them, they assisted them in identifying three specific schools in the City of Philadelphia that actually could be feeders for their apprenticeship program. So we're hoping that this will be the same for public property when they get on board with their apprenticeship program as well.
Okay. All right, thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Mr. President, let me say good afternoon to each of you, and thank you so very much for being here. Before I get started with my budget-related questions, I did want to just state for the record, I wanted to thank you, Ms. Green Jones, for communicating with my office relative to an issue that I won't get into today because we're going to specifically talk about it. We are going to introduce a resolution in City Council as it relates to calling for public hearings regarding the cancellation of the real property evaluated III examination that was administered on August 26, 2015. And it was canceled pursuant to Civil Service Regulation 9017. And so I know we have some more dialogue that we're going to continue to have, and we're going to get as many questions answered the way I think we should respectfully attempt to between my office and yours. But I do want you to know that eventually, and pretty soon after we've answered those questions, we're going to have a public hearing about that issue here. So, but I promise that I wouldn't blindside you.
Okay.
Like, you know, some people do for the sake of 20 minutes or five minutes or whatever you call it. So, but we are going to have a public hearing on it.
We appreciate that, and thank you very much.
Sure. And so with this in mind, let me go to my budget-related questions and start with one very near and dear to my heart. We heard from the Police Department and both Ellen and I, the challenge that they have in terms of timing as it relates to getting employees hired in civil service positions. And I, in particular, as it relates to the Police Department, you know, am constantly advocating for BECops and bike patrols. So we know this is, this is not new in terms of the length of time. Tell us what kind of things that you're sort of doing to improve that time to hire, and particularly as it relates to police and Ellen and I. I know there are several reasons for it, but tell me, what are you doing particularly as it relates to these two departments to sort of improve outcomes?
I'll start off with answering the question, and then I'll actually hand it over to Deputy Maria Agilakis. Initially, we've had several meetings with the Police Department relative to their hiring practices. We, actually, it's been a very good discussion in terms of a way forward, in terms of trying to understand what their needs were, and actually listening to them. Our most recent meeting was the week before last in terms of talking about a way forward, in terms of some initiatives that they'd like to put into place. That has dramatically changed. So now we're on a different road, and I'd like Maria to actually talk about that.
Good afternoon. So as Marsha mentioned, we have met with the Police Department several times. A lot of the things we're looking at is to look at the requirements and where people are falling short. So we did provide an analysis to them. At the time, they were considering adding some requirements that would provide some flexibility. But I'm happy to report, as of this morning, the Civil Service Commission approved the police officer recruit changes that were announced in the media, and the new requirements are high school education only, as well as 22 years of age at time of appointment. So those changes were approved this morning, and hopefully they will be approved by Ad Board next month. And in June, we will be announcing a new police officer recruit examination with those new requirements.
What about Ellen and I?
So for Ellen and I, we have, also this morning, we created two broadband classes for their inspector classes.
You were busy, you were busy today, huh?
We had a really busy day.
Yeah, right. You were moving today.
Last couple of weeks.
Yes.
So actually, the initiative for the broadband classes started last fall. We had some setbacks, and with continued talks with the union as well as the department, and, you know, our new leadership, Marsha, has been very active in the resurgence of these, of these classes. But we have established two classes this morning for the inspector levels that are broadband classes. So for the first time, these classes require So, for the first time, these classes require certifications within a certain period of time, 18 months and 24 months of appointment to the class. And we've expanded the pay range in the class, so that these individuals in the class will be able to progress through the pay saps, earn additional money if they secure additional certifications beyond what's required.
Please make sure that you give a timely update to the Office of the President to distribute to all of my colleagues.
Sure.
Particularly, all of them, but the district council members in particular, who are constantly advocating for those beat and bike patrol officers in neighborhoods, and more patrols in our local districts, the hiring has been a challenge. And so please keep us updated, so that when we are out in the community, we ultimately have to answer to our constituency about why we can't have more officers.
Sure, absolutely.
Aside from just the overall financial constraints. And that relates to the LNI employees also. My next question is in regards to the number of days, and I think you briefly referenced this earlier, about the days for producing civil service eligible lists at 65. And let me, is this business days or calendar days? Like, one of your main goals that I think you listed was that you wanted to, days for producing civil service eligible lists at 65, is that business, calendar? How does that go?
These are calendar days.
Okay, so these are calendar days. Now, you help me, walk me through why it takes two months to produce the list. Tell me, what's the challenge?
Sure, I can go through the process. I can tell you that we have improved on this target, and I don't know if you recorded the numbers, but Marsha stated them earlier. So the days to produce a list in FY08 were 85 days. Back then, we were still paper-based, and since then, we have implemented online application, which has assisted with improving the eligible list dates. We've also improved the processes internally, streamlined a lot of things. Okay, so currently, we're at 42 days for the FY16 period. One of the factors that drives that number up is the public safety exams by contract. We have to wait a period of time before we can test candidates for promotional exams. So for instance, for the written exam, if the bibliography is not changed, we have to wait 90 days from the time that we announce the exam to give the test. If we change the bibliography from the last time we gave the exam, we have to wait 120 days. So that number is going to drive, it's going to be higher because of the public safety exams that we give. In general, the processes, we're required to have job announcements open for two weeks for applications, to accept applications. Following those two weeks, we evaluate the applications, and depending on the volume of applications we receive, that could take a little bit longer than usual. Following the review of those applications, we are required to send the candidates who are not approved for the exam a disapproval notice. We also allow them a two-week period to respond to that disapproval if they want to submit additional documentation, supplement their information on their application. We need, you know, verbal, but eventually, we need a written explanation of their requirements, meaning education or experience, so that we can make a redetermination on their application. While this is all happening, we're still developing the exam, so we're meeting with the departments, talking to the subject matter experts, and developing the exams.
Now, you could have answered that question without saying the word "subject matter expert" to me.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to insult you.
Now, and I am trying to be so disciplined right now by not going into this issue, but I understand, you know you just struck a chord deep inside.
Okay.
Okay.
So the process...
We don't want to strike a chord.
Okay, I will not talk about the involvement with the departments, but they're really experts on the job, so we do need their assistance. So we're the experts on developing the jobs, but we need their knowledge, we need to pick their brain on the information.
I'm being facetious, and I think you understand where I was going. In essence, what I want to say to you is that I appreciate and value the improvement 85 to 42 in FY16, but cities, municipalities, state governments across the nation are doing their best to implement efficiencies to improve this process, not, you know, and I always get frustrated when I hear people say that the private sector always does it better. But as we begin to streamline our process so that we can make municipal government more effective, I don't want us to even look at the FY16 number, that's eight years and we're down to 42, so in essence, we've almost cut it in half, and that's great, but we should not rest on our laurels as if we've done something miraculous. We should be, you know, trying to figure out, how do we get it to 30, right? 30 days, and continuing to reduce it. But I applaud the work that has already been done. Now, my next question, and Councilwoman, I don't see a whole bunch of people lined up, so I thank you, Madam Whip, for giving me, granting me the latitude.
Absolutely.
You know, and Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, she's going to talk, I'm certain, about the issue. She is taking the lead on long before I arrive regarding the issue of the rule of two. But I do want you to answer for me, if you will, particularly just from an HR perspective, why are the full staff salaries for women and minorities so much lower than they are for whites? And what can we do as a municipal government to change that dynamic and bring some parity as it relates to salary?
Well, I think a couple of things. One of the things that you see is, we need to look overall. One of the, in the city of Philadelphia, most employees join the city as a career, so there's very little turnover. And what ultimately happens is, employees stay in a particular area, sometimes people are limited as a consequence of educational requirements for some of the jobs. I think because people see this as a career, people who started earlier on in their careers actually progress further. One of the things that we could encourage employees to do is to take advantage of the educational opportunities. We oftentimes in the city send out announcements about the opportunity for people to go to the universities that we've identified that have reduced tuition. We should perhaps engage in some mentoring programs, because I think one of the things that is clear is that things are changing. We have employees who have been here for a very long time, say, let's take the OHR for example. We have actually five, actually, in our population, we have employees actually who have been here less than five years, 33 percent.
So, Ms. Green Jones, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you just hit on exactly where I wanted to go. You just mentioned two things. Educational opportunities, for me, professional growth and development, right? And then you mentioned mentoring programs, and you talked about each of these from a perspective.
Yes.
Let me ask you this, and it's similar to a question that I just asked procurement. Is there a one-stop-shop sort of document that employees in the city of Philadelphia can have that shows educational opportunities, mentorship programs, or any programs available for professional growth and development that they can apply for? And listen, compete to have the opportunity to participate. See, the issue for me is having access to the opportunity. And I'll tell you why. In some departments, just like in schools, if you don't have a good relationship with the principal, and you're not one of his, you may not necessarily get invited to participate in the conference in your subject matter. If you are an employee in a particular department, if you don't have a special relationship with the right people, you may not necessarily get access to the opportunity. What are we doing to level the playing field to ensure that all employees, no matter what they're ranked, no matter what they're leveled, if they work for the city and their particular department has access to any kind of educational advancement opportunity or other programs? Are we documenting those, or putting them together, or has HR recommended to departments that they submit to you, maybe given some sort of timeline, and then you just compile it? Not that you could do the work, but requiring of departments, is that something you've ever considered?
I think you asked a couple of different things in that question. I think the first thing is that from a global perspective, the answer is no. That's the first answer. I think from a departmental perspective, you will find, I think, and this is across the city, some departments are better than others. Some departments clearly have a distinctive career progression, a career path, that employees can identify with, that they know what they need to get from point A to point B. From a global perspective, is this an opportunity for OHR? Absolutely, but also, it's an opportunity for the Chief Administrative Officer as well. We could certainly work with them, because as you are aware from this morning's testimony, one of the things that they're responsible for is training and development. So working together as a group, certainly, we can identify opportunities, we can certainly learn from some of the other departments that have put together programs. I don't know of a mentoring program within the city of Philadelphia, to be quite honest, but in our structure, I don't know of one. I was speaking, actually, with someone here today about a mentoring program a couple of weeks ago at another meeting. But there is an opportunity, I think, for us to look at it from a global perspective. No, there's no roadmap, but it's certainly something that we have an opportunity to look at, to talk about, to discuss, and certainly to plan a way forward.
I would hope, Ms. Green Jones, I would hope that HR, along with our CAO, would find a way to get together, to work in a collaborative manner, and it would even be great if before we concluded these budget hearings, some sort of meeting could take place, and you all will have begun to etch out the guidelines for, or some sort of timeline for getting together and establishing, again, a one-stop-shop. I'm a directory kind of lady, right? Because I hate people having to go and search all over the place. I mean, we're the city government, we're huge, right? But if all of that information was compiled in a document that very simply, from an organizational and structural perspective, just says, "Contact the Commissioner's Office in that department in any educational advancement opportunities," and you yourself mentioned that some do it better than the others, so all of those who do it extremely well, why don't we ask them to serve as leaders for those who are not doing as well? See if we can get it and compile it, and work in a collaborative manner to get that done. And I would really greatly appreciate that. And in addition to that, the last issue that I wanted to make mention of today, the testimony states that only 54 percent of employees citywide received an evaluation in 2015. Tell me, who owns that metric? I'm sort of, like, who owns that metric? And is this the process that sort of rests with HR? And would you make improvements to that result? I'm trying to sort of understand that 54 percent of employees citywide received an evaluation in 2015.
That metric is something that is, unfortunately, OHR does, we own the data, that's probably a better way to state this, we own the data, however, we don't have the, we can influence commissions to actually perform, to write performance evaluations for their employees. We don't hold them accountable for that. Certainly, the performance evaluations are used for a lot of different things, they're a tool.
Yes, they are.
They're a tool that we use for promotions, for career opportunities, et cetera. So the question is about getting, I think, the entire city on board, and it has to start from the top, in terms of people being committed to writing a performance evaluation for their people, for delivering it on time, to ensure that people are evaluated, so they know where they stand. This, a performance evaluation, is a tool that we can use to give people feedback for developmental purposes, for training purposes. So it's a very valuable tool, but I think we need assistance, we need commitment from the top, because that's where it has to start. So if your commissioner's not evaluating the deputies, then the deputies aren't going to evaluate their managers, the managers aren't going to evaluate their supervisors, and so on. Every single person should have a fair opportunity to be evaluated based upon their performance, because it is a tool that we use on a regular basis to determine, not transfers, but promotions, certainly.
So Ms. Green Jones, let me tell you, I agree with you wholeheartedly, and the reason I asked the question is because when people think about evaluations, they're also a very strong tool for the employee.
Yes.
The employee, when they keep, when they have their evaluations, particularly if they're getting great ones, and they have them on file, if the employee ever decided that it wanted to go work in another department to apply for a promotion, if, you know, on many occasions, which we don't hear about often, if they're attracted to the private sector and they're interested in moving there, that evaluation serves as an important tool for them. The only thing I would disagree with you on is the idea that I would wait for this to sort of happen from the top down. I would dare say to you that I believe that as HR for the city of Philadelphia, if HR determined that, you know, only 54 percent of employees citywide are receiving an evaluation in 2015, we need to increase that goal X percentage, and as the department, HR, sort of sends the recommendation to the administration, or that CAO that we just talked about, you potentially collaborating with, I don't think that it just has to come from top down. I think when we're collaborating, I think the top of the pyramid, because I, see, I'm one, I don't believe in the top-down strategy, right? Because for me, all of the great ideas, particularly in government, you know, politicians get it wrong all the time. We usually don't do anything right until we get pressure from the outside to get it done. So I believe in a bottom-up strategy. So although we have the executive here, I'm a firm believer and would support your efforts. If increasing that metric from 54 percent and establishing a very reasonable goal that is within reach, 16, 17, and if you sent those recommendations to the administration, along with the one-stop-shop for educational opportunities for professional growth and development, the mentoring that you suggested that I think is a wonderful opportunity, I'm almost certain that the top wouldn't be able to ignore those recommendations. And I would like to see what HR can do sort of on its own volition to get those done. You all have perhaps one of the most important jobs in the city of Philadelphia. You know, the city of Philadelphia, University of Pennsylvania, right? Our top employers, and we rely on you to help keep our system moving. We want to be supportive of you, but we also don't want you to feel so limited and constrained that we are not trying to be innovative and be public administrators who view themselves as public entrepreneurs. And I want our legislative branch to be, you know, as helpful as we possibly can. So while I'm making these recommendations, you all may say, well, you know, these are some things that we could do, but it would be great if council could assist us by doing X, Y, and Z. I'm saying we're here to be part of the process also. So please feel free to let us know how we can be helpful.
Actually, we will take that on, we will take that on board with our recommendation, because you know, half of the, half of the success is based upon your ability to influence people to get the job done. So at the end of the day, if we can utilize you to help us influence the process, we'll be glad to take you up on that.
But you just have to give us specific instructions.
Yes, we will give you specific instructions, yes.
Madam Whip, thank you so very much, Madam Chair, for the latitude you provided.
You're welcome, Council Lady. Very well stated. So let me underscore and punctuate a couple of suggestions she's made. I have interns in my office 500 days a year, and they're really only 365, because it's a unique opportunity for middle school and high school students and college students to see government up close and personal, for all the reasons that we understand. Does the city have a policy with regards to allowing interns to be in the midst of professionals at all? A written policy around interns? I'm not aware of a written policy, but we have a program. Okay. We have a program, actually. Do you want to speak a little bit about that? That we participate in. Most departments have the opportunity. Okay.
My name is Brian Albert, I'm a Deputy Human Resources Director. There is a mayor's internship program where they actually place interns throughout various departments, and they work on various projects for the departments. I think it's a great program. I think we've had a fair number of interns become employees because of their exposure to the, you know, the whole city.
So is this a summer intern program, or a year-round program? Is it paid? Is it volunteer? What is it? It's actually, I can speak to that, because we've had interns for the last four years in my department. I'm generally the deputy for benefits, but I'm wearing a different hat, but we've had an intern for the past two years, they've been high school students that were juniors or seniors, and they actually have worked in the Human Resources Department, and they are paid interns. We have them across the city. The program is handled by, I think, it's handled by finance. Is it? Yes. Can you get that information to the presidents, so that council members can be made aware of that? That would be terrific. You mentioned that there are a few universities that the city has a relationship with whereby city employees can seize the opportunity for professional growth. What are those universities? Or who are they?
Brian Albert again. We can send you a complete... We can send you a complete list. It is on the website, the Mayor's Office of Education. They have a returning to learning program.
Okay.
Most of the terms are the same, it's typically a 25% discount, but there are a few nuances. Some are related to undergraduate programs only. And as far as the one-stop-shop, we often refer employees over to the Office of Education for the returning to learning program.
Okay. Very informative.
I think they also include returning to learning, not necessarily at a college level, but a sort of pre-college level, for people who may be a little rusty with their skills.
Sure.
So, and some of those programs are also available to citizens of Philadelphia, it's not restricted to employees.
Great to know. Great to know. Who do you report to directly?
I currently report to Marcia Green Jones, who is the Acting Personnel Director.
Okay. And please?
I also report to Marcia.
Okay. Who do you report to?
I report to the Civil Service Commission.
Where, and so where's the link? Where's the bridge? Where's the interface with the Civil Service Commission and the CAO?
The link and bridge, in terms of what we do on a day-to-day basis, is when there are initiatives, that there could be a collaborative opportunity, we liaise with them. The CAO function is somewhat new, we've collaborated on the recruitment for the Police Department, we've collaborated on Fleet Management, we had a meeting with them regarding some opportunities there.
The demographics in Fleet are abysmal, with regards to women and people of color, for the record. Continue.
Yes. So, as opportunities arise, we also worked with the CAO on a Pew study.
Okay.
We also worked with them regarding the new orientation program, we've worked with that group as well.
So, your department is at the table of the work group that we've heard about this morning?
The work group with the CAO? For the programs that I just mentioned, yes, we were at the table.
I see.
Councilwoman, if you don't mind, I think Fleet is coming on after us. They also have an apprenticeship program for high school interns.
That's one of the more remarkable programs across government.
Yes.
That Fleet does well, and I know that from my first term here.
That's fine, I just wanted to highlight that program.
Absolutely, absolutely. You mentioned that some departments are doing better than others, and we're going to say the rule of two, discussion, dialogue, and debate for the hearing, we won't use that time now. But you say that some departments are better than others, when it comes to having departments that look like the city of Philadelphia, which is prevailing wish for members of council. And so, for those departments that don't meet that test in a way that we would like, what type of incentives, what type of, what does the supervisor or commissioner do to help those that they supervise understand that there's an expectation that government looks like Philly, more specifically, the top layer of government looks like Philadelphia?
Well, there is an opportunity to have more dialogue with the department, certainly. One of the things that we are aware, one of the things that we know, is there's an opportunity also to work more closely with the HR departments, in terms of, there's a report in Oracle, they can go onto Oracle to pull up a report that has EEO information on a regular basis. So, when they get ready to hire that next candidate, the HR manager can influence that hiring manager and say, "These are our statistics, these are the people we have on board, and let's plan a way forward in terms of what we're planning to do." Because today, in today's times, I'm not sure that this is used as a tool, we're certainly able to pull up this information, and we have statistics that tell us, by department, how many minorities there are, from a civil service perspective, and also from an exempt perspective.
Is that right?
So, these same tools could also be utilized by a departmental, on a departmental basis. So, that's certainly a starting point, to have that dialogue, to begin to talk about it. Maria has, twice yearly, has planning meetings for hiring with each of the departments. That's also an opportunity to talk to employees about, to talk to departments about their hiring needs, because they're planning it for the future. So, armed with that document, as well as talking about their hiring plans, they can certainly talk to what their plans are for the future, in terms of meeting that diversity criteria.
Okay. Excuse me for cutting you off. How much better is the Water Department doing? And I ask that question because about three years ago, I asked for a demographic breakdown of the Water Department, and I saw what I expected. So, what improvement or changes has there been over there at the Water Department, when it comes to?
I don't know what their statistics were in the past, could we get back to you? Can we look at, if you'd like to?
Absolutely.
We can look at FY '14, '15, and '16.
See what the trends are.
And compare and look at the trends, if you'd like.
That would be terrific. That would be terrific. Okay, that concludes the questions and notes that I made. Anything else you care to offer?
No, nothing further at this point.
Thank you very much, offering your testimony.
Thank you.
Could we please ask the Fleet professionals to move to the witness table?
Good afternoon, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Please, please, please welcome. Thank you for your patience and endurance, since that's what this is about, when we move to budget season. Please proceed with your testimony.
Good afternoon, I'm Chris Coche, Fleet Manager for the City of Philadelphia. Sitting on my left is Mr. Joseph Rosati, Deputy Fleet Manager for Operations, and on my right is Dr. Kay Wilson, Deputy Fleet Manager for Administration. Thank you for the opportunity to present testimony in support of the FY '17 Operating Budget Request for the Office of Fleet Management. The Office of Fleet Management's FY '17 General Fund Budget Request is $61.14 million, which includes $8.47 million for the purchase of new vehicles and equipment. FY '17 Operating Budget Requests include $16.61 million in Class 100, $9.6 million in Class 200, and $34.93 million in Class 3 and 400. FY '17 General Fund Budget Request is $598,000 less than FY '16 Estimated Obligations. Class 100 funding has decreased by $37,000. This decrease is a combination of funding requirements for DC-47 non-rep salary increases, and increase in increment in longevity, and reduction of overtime expenditures. Class 200 funding has decreased by $56,000 due to the elimination of papal visit expenditures. Class 300 funding has increased by $1.49 million due to fuel price adjustments, and Class 400 funding has decreased by $2 million in vehicle purchases. OFM's strategy is to replace older and no longer economically feasible vehicles and equipment, with more technologically advanced and fuel-efficient vehicles. FY '17 Total Budget Request includes $19.8 million in capital funding, of which $9.8 million is allocated for Fire Department vehicles, and $8 million for Streets Department vehicles and equipment. The FY '17 Operating Budget includes $8.5 million for vehicle purchases, of which $6.4 million is allocated to the Police Department, to replace radio, patrol cars, and other aged vehicles. This concludes my testimony, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
You're very, very welcome, you're very welcome. Please talk to me about, or talk to us about your move towards hybrid and electric vehicles.
This year, we were able to purchase, we had to purchase, many of the vehicle purchases that we made in the past year were work-type vehicles, that we were not able to supply a hybrid that would work in those cases. A lot of cases, work-type vehicles, there's no hybrid option. So, this year, we were only able to purchase four plug-in hybrid electric vehicles, which we're going to supply to the Police Department, as marked, not patrol vehicles, but marked vehicles, to be used in community relations work.
Okay.
This coming up year, we're going to purchase 12 plug-in electric hybrids, and 12 conventional hybrid vehicles. The problem with the plug-in electric hybrid vehicles that we'd like to buy, there's...
You'd like to what?
The problem with the 12 hybrid, plug-in hybrid electric vehicles that we'd like to buy are charging stations, that's one of the problems that we have, placement of charging stations.
Sure.
But we've been able to work with some of the departments, the Department of Public Property is working with us to try to place them in various police districts. Streets Department indicated they'd like to help us by placing them in some of the streets' locations, because they need a place to adequately fully charge.
Of course. Update us on the internship program that Fleet has had, at least since I've been here, and of those type of programs across the government, this is one which really has created, from where I sit, a pathway for young people to move into that area, and sometimes secure a city opportunity. Where are we with that?
At the present time, we have 10 interns. Three of those, I'm sorry, seven of those are going to promote, seven of those are going to promote, I'm sorry, seven are going to promote to civil service positions. This year, we're going to bring in four new interns for the mechanical side, we hope to bring in two interns for the body shop side. They might be only summer interns, we're trying to work with the school district on a way to keep them on past the summer.
Sure. And so, you recruit these young people from the school district?
Yes.
What is the, is the relationship with the high school principal, or is it through central operations? How do you ultimately capture the attention of these young people?
We have a liaison that we work with, within the school district, who gathers up the potential candidates, there's criteria that they need, they need to be at least 16 years old, they need to be entering their junior year of high school, they need to maintain a C average. So, there's certain criteria that the school district requires, and again, we work with our liaison to place them in our...
And what department is that, the school district? Do you recall offhand?
I'm sorry?
Do you know what department that is at the school district, that you interface with?
I'm not sure I get back to it.
I ask only so that when the school district comes to speak with us, we can help, I'd be curious to know, how is it working on the school district end, and what can we do to uptick that number? The number of young people that you get into the program is driven by what? Dollars, or space availability, or what?
Generally, it's space available. One of the issues we have, too, is the amount of hours that they need to complete when they're in the internship.
Okay.
So, they need to spend some hours while they're in school, working with us, which means they have to work after school.
I see.
There are not a lot of shops that we have that are open in the evening, to allow them to spend time in school during the day, and then work in the evening. So, placement's a little bit critical. Plus, we like to try to place the children where, or the young adults, in an area where it's convenient for them to go to school.
Okay.
Travel to work, and then travel home. So, sometimes placement is a little bit difficult. Some of our shops are also in remote locations that aren't easily accessed by public transportation.
How long have you been in your position of leadership, and the men on both sides of you? Just update us, for the record, your tenure with the department, and in your position.
I've been with Fleet Management since 1993, I've been in this position since 2013. Dr. Kay Wilson has been in the position the same amount of time, and Joseph Rosati's been about a year in that position.
How many employees report to you?
Two.
Oh, just the two? So, a different question. How many employees make up Fleet?
330.
And that may be in the demographics. Forgive me?
There's 330 total employees at the present time.
So, you know I have to ask, how many of them are women?
Twenty, 23.
Okay. All right. Because we do pay attention to staff demographics across departments, and, actually looking for that number here. So, are you two gentlemen exempt employees?
Yes.
Okay. And so, what is your view, and clearly recognizing that, this is an observation, and it really is a personal opinion, Fleet, I would suspect, and it's also a very sexist statement, might be difficult, no, might not be attractive for female employees, wouldn't be attractive to me, for a place to work. So, given that harsh reality, how can we move towards capturing the imagination of women, so that we can see them reflected at the top level of your organization?
That's a good question. We are always working to try to attract women and minorities. We have a Training and Development Officer who works in that area.
Okay.
Works with the school district, works with local trade schools, goes to job fairs. So, we're always trying to attract what to do to increase that, I'm really not sure.
Sure.
I don't, this is a, this is a male-dominated, as well as many of the other trades are as well.
Sure.
So, it's kind of difficult to attract female candidates.
Mm-hmm. Are you aware of an organization, whose name escapes me right now, but they actually train women to have a love for cars?
I was not aware of that.
I'll get the name to you. She was recently featured on Sunday Morning with, it used to be Charles Osgood, I don't know who does Sunday Mornings now, CBS Sunday Mornings, and they featured this woman from Philadelphia, who has her own garage, if you will, and she trains women to do all that one needs to know how to do on vehicles. So, I'll make sure that my officer puts you in touch with her.
Thank you.
Okay. When we look at the demographics here, there's also no appearance of people of color, specifically African-Americans, that have been able to ascend to positions of responsibility and authority. Recognizing that you've only been there for a couple of years, where are you on the pathway of creating, or at least having, opportunities for African-Americans at the leadership level of your team?
Well, we are hoping to, we have some people, some interns that promoted.
I see.
Through the program. There are currently 11 of our technical staff came from the internship program. Of those 11, four are in management positions right now.
I see.
Three of those are African-Americans, one is Hispanic, one is white. So, we're hoping to groom people to come in through the program, through that.
So, there's a pipeline for opportunities, is what I'm hearing?
So, there is opportunity for advancement, there's always testing.
Sure.
Again, we test every few years for maintenance team leaders, which is one level of responsibility, maintenance supervisors, the next level of responsibility. So, we're continually looking for opportunities.
Okay. All right, then. Well, that covers my question, my home, I might have some more homework. Okay. Thank you very much. So, anything else you all care to share with us?
We're applying for a CNG grant tomorrow.
But we want to hear about it, go ahead.
There's a CNG grant available, it's a federal grant, it's being sponsored by the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. Particularly for congestion mitigation and air quality. We're applying for a grant for possibly 70 compressed natural gas refuse compactors.
Wow.
The grant will pay for 80% of the total cost of the truck.
Oh, wow.
So, we're presently in the process of putting together the paperwork, it's due tomorrow. So, we're hopeful that we receive the grant, the award is due sometime in August.
Mm-hmm. And any feel for how promising that might look for the city? Is this a first, where your department has applied for that type of opportunity?
This is the first for natural gasses.
I see.
So, we're pretty excited about it, I think, I think we have a pretty good chance of getting something, if not, probably not the whole thing, but something.
Well, it's another important step to try to reduce our carbon footprint, so that that's all good. We wish you well. Please make sure you have a press conference, so that the world knows when you get it. Okay?
We will.
All right, then. Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. This committee will now stand in recess until Monday, May 2, 2016, at 10:00 a.m., at which time we will reconvene in Room 400, City Hall. Thank you.